We have most of them away from us for a war of peace. Thank you. Okay. Let's go to the children. 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 Okay.[295.97]
Service. Thank you, Tim.[1.55][1.55][applause] Number two is Gary Thorsett, technology support technician for the DSC with 25 years of service. They will be recognized in our victory.[17.14][17.14][applause] The resignations, terminations, and nonrenewals as listed, the candidates for employment in your packet, and the leaves of absence as listed. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So made.
By Mary, second?
Second.
Sorry.
Me.
Stacy. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries six zero. Okay, next on our agenda is a resolution for the acceptance of gifts. We have donations from Wells Fargo, Jeffers Pond PTC, and Nuvera. Do I have a motion to accept the donations?
So made.
By Mary?
Second.
Second by Jonathan. Any comments or questions? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Michael?
Aye.
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 That motion carries six zero. Next on our agenda is Laker Pride Showcase.
Like, we've had a lot of Laker Pride already. Good evening, everyone. What a fun treat to have the Jazz Group with us this afternoon, or this evening, as we were preparing for the meeting, and certainly nice to walk into the room filled with unbelievable talent of our students, and then to have the anthem team begin our meeting is just such a delight. We have unbelievable music programs throughout our district, from our pre-K kids all the way up through our seniors, and I couldn't be more proud of our students and the staff who instruct them and push them and challenge them and support them every single day. This evening, one of our high school directors, Rob Han, is going to share an overview of a comprehensive music program that we have that is so amazing. Justin Schramm, one of his high school colleagues was here earlier. I think Justin snuck out with his musicians, and certainly Keith Kuhlmus and Randy Erlinson are huge parts of that high school staff as well. But I just want to thank all of our music staff, and I want to celebrate all of you for the amazing work that you do for our kids every single day, and we're going to start a new tradition here. This year, it's the high school that's going to kind of provide some entertainment and information, and next year, we can have the middle school music folks and then the elementary music folks because we certainly have a lot to share. So with that, Rob, I'd invite you to come forward this evening and share some information, and then I know you have a concert to get to.
I do. I need to get across town really quickly. My son sings in the seventh grade choir, and they started at seven o'clock, so we'll see how fast I can get to him. He's a pretty understanding kid. So when we got the invite for Anthem Team to show up for Music in Our Schools Month, for, I think, this is either the third or the fourth time in a row, I was really tired and really proud of what was going on in the high school music program. So I fired off an email, like I tend to do, and I said, hey, there's more going on K-12 than Anthem Team. Not that we love Anthem Team, they're great, but I wanted a chance to share with you some more of what's going on. So I put together this quick presentation for you. I'm not going to read it all to you, but truly, this is the mission statement from NAFME, the National Association for Music Education. This is the purpose of music in our Schools Month, is to give us an opportunity to share with you all the great things that are going on in our music programs. So there is our staff as it exists, I believe. That picture was from the start of last year. That is the entire K-12 music faculty. Any of the groups with a logo got on there, but truly, these people love coming to work every day. I love coming to work every day, and we'd love just being a part of not just the learning and the technical growth of our students, but the emotional and expressive capabilities of those kids, and we just really love what we do. So I sent an email to the team and said, give me the highlights. What's going on at each of your levels, and if you have them, send me pictures. So this is what we got from the elementary. You'll see a picture on the next slide of all of the elementary choirs performing at the end of year celebration last year. The fifth grade students are now playing ukuleles, and that's a really cool addition to the music curriculum. They just finished an opera residency, Minnesota Opera Residency at Glendale this last week. The Redtail Ridge kids go to the Twins game and sing every year, take me out to the ballgame, and K through three is music programs annually by every grade level on every kid. So there's some of those pictures. A picture of the ukulele kids up there in the corner. That is the one of the sixth grade choirs, I believe, in the lower right.
Redtail.
Redtail. Thank you, Amy. And then the mass sixth grade choir, or at least a great number of them, at the end of the year celebration last year. Middle school's highlights. Seventh grade choir goes to sing the anthem at a Gophers game. The Jazz Band has gone to the U every year for, I think, the last four years, which has been a really great thing. Middle school bands march on Memorial Day. They did a splash commercial last year, Brian Melody's Kids, which was pretty cool, and they go to, both the band and choir go to Valley Fair every year, as well as a seventh grade choir performance, or sorry, band performance at Eden Prairie Center this year. So that is some images of all those kids having fun. That lower left corner is the sixth grade choir. It's 300 singers. They called asking about risers. We said, we can send everything we have, but you still won't fit, so go ahead and go to the gym and do that, and you'll see that. Upper left is the all-district band concert, which is a highlight every year. I loved the picture in the lower middle there. It was a project done by the middle school choir teachers of how we're all different, but we all fit together. And now, let's see, Gopher Highlights up there in the center, and I think one of the middle school band workshops that they went to at the high school. Quite a few things have happened in the last year. Marching Band marched at the U again. They've also marched at the State Fair. They were invited to play for the inauguration last year of the governor, which was really awesome. They have commissioned brand-new music, which is really exciting to get to play something for the very first time. Marching at the Prep Bowl, Justin's group, the Percussion Ensemble, played at MMEA Conference, which is a huge, huge deal, last year. We're really proud on the choir side of the masterworks in the fall. We're on our fifth annual concert. We have an audience of about 1,100 for that event, which is truly, truly a blast. This year was a real blast. The Gospel Mass was super awesome. Performance Tours, band is headed to Spain in just a couple of weeks, and last year, we were in California. So there's some pictures of that. There's the governor's inauguration in the lower right. The varsity guys in the middle looking very sharp in their ties. That is Celebrate in the lower left. That's 275 kids, and a, I don't know, choir teacher playing bass. I'm not sure what that's all about. Upper left-hand corner are some photos from our fall. Some of our kids, some you might recognize. A rehearsal there in the corner with our combo for the Gospel Mass, and one of our guest clinicians that came in and spent a half a day with us working, that's Tesfa. He is from St. Olaf. He is amazing. Just some of the things, this is part of why I was really tired when I got the email. February was a really, really busy month for us. Choir had performances at the Minnesota Valley Men's Corral. That was a special invitation. The very next weekend on a Saturday night, the Women's Corral for Minnesota Valley. We were hosting the Treble Choir for the conference festival. We got to attend Vocho's Eight. If you're a music and a singing nut like I am, that is about the hottest vocal group worldwide right now. They performed at St. Michael Albertville, and we spent most of an afternoon and an evening and sang with them in concert, which was really, really great. That is a list of all of the composers, clinicians, college directors, everybody that our high school kids have worked with in the last year. And I actually left a couple off the list because they were, you know, just popping in for a few minutes, but the choirs are all listed in orange there. All of the people that came and worked with the band kids are listed there in blue. There's a little bit of our festival experience. That was my seat upper right-hand corner for the Vocho's Eight concert. They were that close the whole night. Coolest seats I've ever had to a concert in my life. Men's Festival on the upper left, Women's Festival at Northfield in the bottom. That's the Vocho's Eight group. There were over 900 kids singing with them that day from 10 different schools. And then the Joy Tore was here on the Anthem Team, but that's her mom. Her mom sings with Minnesota Valley Women's Corral, so they got to share the stage, and I thought that was a really nice example of kind of the lifelong learning that we all strive to teach our kids to go for. Wanted you to know a little bit about how we're doing. The Honor Choir is one of our indicators of success, when we've got kids who are making those ensembles. So all state, we had six choir kids last year. That is the max. They wouldn't have let in another Prior Lake kid no matter what. Band got three. The Honor Choirs run in grades four through 10. They're run by three different organizations. ACDA is American Choral Directors. MBDA is Minnesota Band Directors, and you can see there are the numbers of kids that we send to those events. Because they're well-trained, they're talented, they're working hard, they're prepared, they audition, and they're accepted. ACDA has over 2,000 auditions a year. We had 12 9-10 kids, that's the max. Honor Choir at the middle school had 21, which is funny because the max is 20. That happened to us at the high school last year, too. I had to call and say, you gave us 15 names, but the limit is 12. I've read the rules. Are you going to tell three of our kids they can't come? And they said, no, no, you're fine. Send them all. So we sent 15. 456 Honor Choir is really exploding. We had 10 this year, which is awesome. I don't know that we've had any before last year. I think last year was the first time. MBDA Honor Band, they run the same kind of structure for the band kids. They each sent one, but the first and second-year Honor Band in the southwest region, Brian and Dagan and Casey have sent over 20 kids the last two years. We did have two kids, two vocalists reached state finals in NATS, which is the National Association of Teachers of Singing Competition. So there's a little bit of that. There's our three all-state band kids up there at Orchestra Hall, and below them, the all-state choir kids. That is 910 Honor Choir rehearsal, that really funky-looking room there. That's at a church up in Minneapolis. The 78 Honor Choir there in the middle, and our 910 Honor Choir kids at the top of that photo. Just there's the organizations that run them. We're very thankful. We're all members of all of those organizations. That's how those opportunities are available to our kids. We send kids to contest every year. Band sent 70 kids to contest last year and came home with 55 superior ratings. That is the highest score available. They have to score, I think, 35 or higher. Choir sent 29 down to Mankato and came home with 27 of those 29 as superior ratings. Our music staff is not only busy during the day, we're busy all the time. In fact, there are four and soon-to-be five community ed offerings that are taught by PLSAS music faculty. The Middle School Musical is a community ed event. They have ridiculous numbers of kids. I can't, it's got to be 80 or 90 kids. The DJ Team is an annual event that's been going on. I think Brian is on that about three years, and they're busy all the time, too. They play every Friday morning. They play all sorts of district events. It's just a really great time. Summer Choir Camp was new last year. They had, how many, about 30, do we know?
About 20.
20, and we're hoping to grow that. Garage Band started last spring as a community ed event, and that is growing. And this year, they're going to have a summer ukulele camp, and that is a really exciting new add. The group Private Lesson Program, wanted to make sure we highlight that. That's where our beginning band kids really get their start, and that's where all of our kids get to continue and develop on their own, studying privately. So 409 kids at the middle school take lessons of some sort through the summer, or in groups or in individuals, and 40 kids at the high school taking private lessons. There is some of those highlights. There's Garage Band and DJ Club, the Summer Choir Camp there in the bottom, the Lesson Program montage up there in the left, and of course, the Musical in the upper right-hand corner. Just so you get an idea about who your staff is, who your faculty are, those are all of the professional organizations and professional groups that we play with, sing with, or belong to. Mr. Schramm was awarded the Young Conductor of the Year last year, which was awesome for the state of Minnesota. He was the guy. Very, very well-deserved honor. Ms. Erlinson and I are Repertoire and Resource Chairs for ACDA Minnesota for Men's Choir Music. Ms. Beaton is now the co-chair of the 456 State Honor Choir. Mr. Kuhlmus was Treasurer of MBDA. Schramm, Hans, and Melody have all done section coaching at MBDA. Randy and I have presented five times in the last two years at conference for music educators. We have people who come to see us teach in Prior Lake because of what's going on here. They come and ask questions. They sit in, they watch rehearsals, and then they ask more questions. We are also festival clinicians this last year. We've all had, almost all of us have had student teachers. This is a destination that people like to send college kids to, to get a great feel for what's going on, and we love having young teachers around. They keep us energized and on our toes. And then some of the performing groups that you see listed there, Grand Symphonic Winds, Medalist Band, the U of M Health Sciences Orchestra, the Hosanna Worship Band, and the South Metro Corral. Many of the staff members have performed with all of those organizations. I wish Justin was still here. He could tell you more about this assignment. Are you here, Justin? Will you tell us a little bit about this, where this quote came from?
Sure. So with our varsity bands and our wind ensemble, I asked them to all find a piece of music that they connected with. It could be any genre, anything, and to just sit down and just listen. And as they were listening, they had to think about what music meant to them, and they then shared the music that they listened to and why, and then wrote a statement on what music, or music education, or anything. It was open-ended. They had to be thoughtful and make it meaningful for them. And so we anonymously have these posted all over the music suite, so students went today to read what their classmates said and how all of them individually connect with music. And this is one of our students in the band program that wrote, "Music means more than just learning notes and rhythms. Music means working collaboratively and independently. It's about knowing your strengths and what you can improve on. It's a way of being creative and something that is valuable to you and your emotions, whether you create music, play it, or listen to it. Music is about being able to learn and grow, not only as a musician, but as a human being. Music is such a beautiful thing to have, thanks to the creativity it gives and the skills that can be applied to anything in life." And we just thought that one, out of the 180 that I read on the past week, that was just a beautiful thing about what this meant to this student.
Yeah, and that was a really great way, that was Keith's suggestion to end the quick little presentation, but what a really great exercise of 100% the choir program is stealing this lesson plan from Mr. Schramm, and we're going to go ahead and use it, too. It yielded some really great writing. And then just an invitation. Thank you for having us here. Thank you for inviting us to be here, but you are always welcome in our classrooms. It's an open door. Please come check out what's going on. Ask any questions you want. See the great teachers in action and all these really great kids. So thank you so much for having us.[1049.49][1049.49][applause]
Thank you, Rob, Justin, and all your colleagues. Rob?
Oh, yeah.
Next on our agenda is personnel items. Mr. Querem?
Good evening. We have one job description that we have brought back, as is now our practice. If we have a one-deep job, or a few-deep job, and it's vacated, Tim, we take a look at that before we go forward. And so there's just a couple of minor, minor changes here. Things like, instead of food service, it says child nutrition and things like that, so commas, periods, that sort of thing, but as far as the overall meat of it, there was no changes.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the revised job description?
So made.
By Mary, second?
Second.
By Stacy, any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. And Dr. Stallow, are you?
I think Jeff's going to pick it up.
Jeff's going to, okay.
Good evening, Chair Shimick, members of the board, Dr. Stallow. My part tonight is actually going to be pretty short. I'm going to introduce really the next two topics. For the last couple of years, we've been talking about educational equity and personalized learning. Our updates have been about the why, professional development, how much, you know, how much we're engaging the staff, and to credit to Dr. Shuttenger, he said, you know, I think we need to start shifting to talking about what, and what the student experience is. And so tonight, as we have our, both of these updates for you, we have a host of teacher teams here that are going to be presenting and sharing the experiences that are happening in their classrooms and happening with their students. So I'm going to give credit where credit is due to the teaching staff, the teachers that you're going to hear tonight, some of the experiences that they're doing and providing in their classrooms, to, of course, Dr. Shuttenger and Teaching and Learning Team and principals for moving this work forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin and the others as we go through this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holberg. I am also really excited, Chair Shimick, Dr. Stallow, and board members, to share with you some of the amazing work that our teachers and staff are making possible for our students every day. And as I share it, I want you really to keep in mind that this is the tip of the iceberg. This is just a small sampling of some of the incredible work that our teachers are bringing to life every day in our classrooms and in our schools. As a part of this presentation, I will review some of the connections to the priority goal areas and the strategic direction alignment, our connections with this work in Reimagine Minnesota. I'll show you some updates from 2019 and '20 of the work in action, and then again, the majority of it will be you seeing and hearing from our own teachers about what's happening for our students and in our classrooms. So this goal area is related to educational equity in E12. The current alignment aligns to our work with increasing measurable student growth and achievement, expanding innovative programming to meet family needs and all of our families' needs, and to engage parents, families, and communities in strengthening a culture of respect and inclusion. It's aligned to strategic direction, A, about increasing measurable student learning and reducing achievement gaps as we provide equitable student opportunities through personalized learning and student engagement. The Reimagine Minnesota goals, you'll see before you there, are all about seeing all, serving all, and supporting all. And Reimagine Minnesota, as a reminder, is the work of a conglomeration of superintendents and districts across the metro, supported by AMSD, and really to rethink how we serve and provide educational services for all of our students in the Twin Cities. So when we think about seeing all, it's about engaging and intentionally engaging diverse stakeholders, building trust and relationships with them so that they feel safe to share what their experiences are, and so we can use that to make our systems and our schools better. Serving all, we're talking about personalizing learning and education for all students and guaranteeing access to rigorous learning to prepare them for the future. And supporting all is all about equitable resources. When we think about providing resources for our programs, when we think about advocating for resources at the state or federal level, it's aligned to student needs, and it's aligned to that equitable student experience for all students. There are nine key strategies. I will just speak to a few of them, and you'll just see some highlights from some of them in this presentation, specifically related to cultural competence and our work with developing that in our teachers and our staff. Our work with bridging, building bridges between school and community. Our work with personalized learning, which we'll also see some connections with in the next presentation. Our work with building and enhancing student voice. Our students will tell it to us straight, and they will tell it to us about what their experience is like, both positive and things we need to improve and make better, and we can use that, and we are using that, to make real tangible improvements in our schools and classrooms. And also about our work with cultural inclusivity, about making our curriculum and our teaching in our schools and our classrooms more culturally inclusive. So with that, I'm going to invite up my team of amazing teachers and staff, again, to come and share some of the work. I want you to hear it from them. I will ask you, just to kind of save questions to the end, to give all the teachers a chance to share their work and some of their strategies in action. It's incredible, and as I was putting this presentation together and inviting some of our teachers and staff, I was just amazed again and again and again, both at how many people we had to invite and at the people who are so willing to share some of their great work. So without further ado, we're going to talk a little bit about cultural competence. So we have some of our CLR resource teachers here today. Those are teachers across the district. We have some in every building who help to keep culturally and linguistically responsive teaching practices advancing, developing, help more practitioners and teachers take on these strategies. So first up, we have Emma Brightenstein. She's a fourth-grade teacher in Jeffers Pond, and she's going to tell you a little bit about CLR strategies and literacy.
Awesome, thank you. So like I said, I'm Emma Brightenstein, teach fourth grade. And so this year especially, I've been focusing on the literacy aspects of culturally responsive teaching, and so you can kind of see what I've been doing this year is incorporating those CLR strategies, specifically the literacy and vocab strategies into my daily instruction, but then specifically into a reading intervention group that we have for all the fourth-grade students, and then also have had some opportunities to do some things with the entire Jeffers Pond staff at staff meetings and such. So I have a couple examples from my classroom. I got to go to the CLR Institute this last summer, and one of the strategies I took away was doing some character traits on paint strips, and so that's what the kids are doing there, where they took a word to describe a character and then reached for more specific words, kind of building their synonyms, and they loved this. They were like, where were these paint strips from? Like, I'm making my dad take me to Walmart tonight. Like, they just sort of like, could not get enough. And then here's a couple of my students doing a vocabulary game in math. It's a back-to-back drawing, so I had some vocab words related to our math unit on the board, and they had to describe a drawing and then turn and try to match the drawing. And then lastly, this is from our reading intervention group. They had some words. It's almost kind of like a catchphrase game. It ends up being where they have to describe the word to their partner. Just some specific examples. I think it's important to talk about what truly is CLR. I think sometimes it becomes a buzzword or represents something that doesn't represent what it fully is. I think sometimes people are like, oh, this is only why we're not celebrating Halloween, or this is only about race. And I think one of the biggest things I'm learning is the L in CLR. So it's culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and learning. And Shiroki Holly's definition is the validation and affirmation of home culture and language for the purpose of building and bridging the students to success in the culture of academia and in mainstream society. So how I understand that is understanding and valuing your students, the culture identity that they're bringing into the classroom or that they're bringing from home, and then purposely teaching either to validate and affirm that or build and bridge what's expected in an academic setting. And I think that really ties in super well. It's like have our little Relationships Matter gears, because it just keeps reminding me of, we have to know our students and then plan our instruction based on that. Why the focus on vocab instruction? I purposely set up this slide with kind of a vocab strategy that I might use with my students, even something simply, this is called Fill-in-the-Blank Reading, where I'd underlined a word in the slide, and then we'd read it together, and it would validate and affirm the students who kind of have that communalism, cultural behavior, where they like to read together and kind of builds a class and community of like, we are all reading this together and we're on the same page. So the focus on vocab instruction is to help underserved struggling students move towards proficiency and understanding that culture does influence how and what students learn, and so educators can use culture to improve student self-image and also their achievement. We can really tap into students' cultures and interests as tools to help teach them. We must teach students the way that they learn rather than expecting them to learn the way that we teach. And the biggest takeaway that I got from the workshop last summer and just what I keep seeing in my classroom is it gives students lots and lots of meaningful exposures and opportunities to practice and trying to weave it into as many places as possible. Lastly, the impacts that I've seen is just way higher engagement for me and for my students. I think these strategies hold a lot more accountability for students and really engages students in a way that are maybe not always traditionally validated or affirmed in a classroom. With that reading intervention group, we've seen math test improvement scores, I think from the reading intervention that we're doing, but I think they also really love those activities. I try to plan a strategy every Friday, and it kind of fooled them into like calling it Fun Friday, but it's just like a CLR strategy, and they love it, and it's really fun for both me and the students. And then I'll just end with a little post-it note that one of my students gave me earlier this year, that really truly seems like I paid her to write this for this presentation, but we had done a discussion protocol, and she said, Dear Ms. Brightenstein, can we do that again? How we got to go around the room and share? That was so cool. Could we do that again? And so even just like, students love to do this and want to advocate for the strategies that they like and getting to move around and talk with each other.
Thank you, Emma. Emma is also, thank you.[1745.63][1745.63][applause] Emma is also a Teacher of the Year nominee and an incredible example of both an emerging leader in her classroom and her school. She leads CLR Professional Development across Jeffers Pond. Next up, we have Diana Fornshell. She's a Westwood and Laola Delago music teacher, and she's going to talk a little bit about using CLR strategies in music education.
I should have brought my ukulele, and I could have sung some of the strategies to you. Yes, you got to play with us.
I got to play.
That was so much fun. So thank you so much for having me, and I just want to thank Emma for setting up kind of what CLR is in such a great way. But I started my journey with CLR. I was part of the second cadre last year, so just over a year ago, like a year ago, January, and what really drew me in was immediately, as soon as I started using the strategies in the classroom, I just in the classroom, I just saw an uptick in student engagement and just really being invested in their learning and really leading their own learning. So I incorporate a lot of the discussion protocols as we're talking about different kinds of music and reviewing different musical knowledge and listening examples, giving students opportunities to move and to talk, which are two things that they really love to do using these CLR strategies and musical content. So just a couple of examples of those. Recently, we did one called Silent Appointments. So our fifth grade students study four genres of music in detail: blues, spirituals, tycho, and musical theater. And as a closing activity, they chose which one they liked the best, and they had to give specific reasons, comparing and contrasting with the other genres, why they liked it better than the other. And then they make a silent appointment. So they use nonverbal cues, usually a nod, eye contact, hand signals, to find their person that they're going to have their appointment with, and then they can move with that person around the room and share their answer. So this protocol really allows student choice of who they share with, and the teacher can certainly lead that. Sometimes I'll give them a direction of find somebody you don't usually partner with or find somebody different than you shared with last time. And it also gives them a chance to be social and to talk and opportunity for movement. And then when we came back into our seating area, we are in chairs now since we're playing ukulele. It's nice to have those chairs out for them to sit in when they're playing. And we did then a somebody who. So that's a protocol where some of them are going to have to share, and they don't know who it's going to be. So I might say somebody who's wearing pink or somebody who has one younger sister, and that group of students will get up and share what they talked about with their partner or what their thoughts were on whatever our topic is for that day. And this protocol holds all students accountable for participation and assesses understanding amongst the students. And then just a couple of pictures there. You can see a couple of students in their silent appointments and then a couple of students standing, I believe it was somebody who's wearing orange. That was the direction, and they're sharing what they learned. But some of the things I really enjoyed and the students have enjoyed, getting new tools for the toolbox. So all of these protocols have helped me to incorporate more student-led learning into my classroom. And the great thing is you can pick and choose what's going to work for a particular class or group of students, or even if you have one student in mind, is there a protocol, a strategy that's going to work really well for that student on that day. And then I've noticed that more students are actively participating and are willing and eager to share their thoughts and ideas. And for many of my students, probably the biggest thing I've seen is they know they're going to get that chance to move and to talk, and so they are better able to focus during the more teacher-led, traditional instructional time. So thank you for letting me share.
Next up, we have Brandy Allstrand, our peer coach and QCOM coordinator, and this is all about integrating equity questions into peer coaching. Our peer coaching programs promotes reflective practices for our teachers and helps them really think about what's working and what's not. You're starting to hear some of those threads across teachers about seeing that, hey, that strategy I tried really engaged the students and to encourage that active, ongoing reflection for our teachers. So Brandy's going to tell you a little bit about how she's leading our peer coaching team into doing more of that with our teachers.
All right, thank you, Kevin. All right, hello. So we kind of have a unique role as peer coaches here in our school district. And when we started the initial work with Dr. Holly, we wanted to tap into this because we have an important role of supporting teachers and being reflective practitioners. So we have been very fortunate with Dr. Schutenger, allowing us the opportunity to grow and explore professionally in the work of CLR. And our journey started a couple of years ago. A couple of us were fortunate to go to a presentation given at the University of Minnesota by Dr. Zaretta Hammond, who takes a look at the neuroscience between how human beings are wired to adhere to expansive learning and critical thinking. And we were so inspired by that presentation that we asked Dr. Schutenger if we could please get Zaretta Hammond's book and do a professional book study within our peer coaching team. As we got further into our book on equity, we also had a unique opportunity to attend the Equity Alliance of Minnesota. And it is a group where we have regional dialogue on advancing equitable practices and being advocates for underserved populations. And we met in that cohort with other representatives around the South Metro area about once or twice monthly, and we would bring our practices back and discuss them and how to further support our teaching staff. We also took away our key learnings and were invited to speak at Coaching Summit for the South Metro QCOM coordinators programs to kind of share the message of what we're doing here in Prior Lake Savage area schools. And that led to some of our most important work, and that's how we serve our teachers here in our district. And so what we took a look at is when Dr. Holly shared with us, we primarily take a look at our underserved populations, and we try to figure out how we can VAB or validate, affirm, build, and bridge. But it's not only our students, it's also our teaching staff, because we are all on different journeys in our equity continuum. So we, as peer coaches, took a look at the impact on teaching, because we work primarily with our educational staff. And we decided that we need to nurture a growth mindset, we need to help develop or continually strengthen their skill set, we want them to be responsive and reflective practitioners and find what they're doing is yielding a difference in the lives of all of their students and taking account of all the rings of culture. So with Dr. Holly's work, we noticed that we could really tap into developing questions and prompts in our Charlotte-Danielsen frameworks. And there are four domains that we take a look at, and that goes from planning and preparation, classroom environment, we take a look at instruction, and also our professional responsibilities. And we developed linked there, there's a cultural competency questions list. So over the last year, we have developed a plethora of questions that match each domain that we can ask our teaching staff in pre and post observations. And it allows them to take into account how to personalize learning for all of their students while also adhering to educational equity instructional practices. And we primarily focus on how we can incorporate attention, response, discussion, and movement protocols, E through 12th grade. And the impact that this has had is our teachers, when we're asking them specific prompts, like how do you differentiate learning to meet the needs of every student in your classroom? What behaviors seem to trigger a negative response that perhaps is just something that is age-appropriate? So how can we accommodate that and not look at it as punitive measures, but respecting where that child is on the developmental continuum? So we continually refine and ask questions to get them thinking. This helps students facilitate brain processing. It helps to motivate and engage students, because now we're, they're seeing themselves in text, they're seeing themselves in the visuals on the walls, we're being respectful and responsive of their needs. We can also take a look at issues that are important to them, whether it's different social justice, different zoning issues, why that might be happening. They can tap into some research and critical thinking skills. And the most important thing along the journey is allowing them to have a sense of belonging, that they truly matter, that they are a part of our community, and we celebrate and respect each other's differences. So by supporting our teachers, we're ultimately supporting our most important stakeholders, which are our students. And peer coaches have been very grateful that we have been allowed the opportunity to look into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. All right. This is just a quick overview of some of the professional learning that we have offered and led just this year. So you'll see some academic vocabulary sessions with Dr. Holly. We have sessions with outside consultants. Hibak Mohammed is an example. We brought her in to help our teachers better understand how to support culturally and linguistically diverse students, specifically some of our East African and Muslim students. Those are students and cultures that our teachers have expressed that we need more help in connecting with them and understanding them and how best to serve both the students in our classrooms and their families and build connections. Russ Reitz has also led several sessions on IGEN, really about the culture that our students bring with them today, really, and it's all about age culture. So they are growing up in a tremendously different time than any of us did, and it's constantly changing. And they have unique, unique needs, motivators, and skills because of that. We also have ongoing CLR cadres in the schools you see before you and a couple more coming up yet this year. The next strategy for Reimagine Minnesota is all about building bridges between school and community. This is such an important step as we seek to really strengthen those connections so that we are all partners in helping students succeed. And Karina Lyons is our new American Indian Education Coordinator, and we're all busy in the district, but Karina's really busy. She is just going to share, again, this is a tip of the iceberg of some of the work she is, has taken on to really strengthen and improve our American Indian education program and support all of our students and families in the district.
Okay. Say, Anin Buju, Ojana Miziquay, Indigenous. So what I'm saying is, hello, Karina is my name, and what Ojana Miziquay means is busy lady. An elder gave that to me when they realized how busy I was. I'm very busy in my life. I do a lot of different, a lot of different things besides, besides working. I'm excited to be here. It's my first year. It's been going really well so far. However, I don't like technology too well, but I'm, I'm learning it. It's a little, little bit struggle for me, because I actually live four hours north of here in Tower, Minnesota, and I come down and I work for the week, and then I go back up on the weekend. So it's, the technology, we didn't have all that quite up there, but it's going well. So it's been really fun, the different things that I have been doing here, working with the students and the families. And I attend the IEP and evaluation meetings. If any of the families have any issues going on, if there's some issues with attendance or behavior, I attend that as well. Native Nations groups, there's a photo on here for our next one is with the, with the equine therapy that we have. We call it the Horse Camp. It's right here in Prior Lake. But I take the kids that attend the Native Nations groups, which we've got going so far now in the middle school, the high school, and at Bridges. And we take them on this field trip, and right there is Rebecca Crook's daughter is Gabby. She's walking around and showing the kids how to smudge. And I'm actually really proud of Gabby, because she just emailed me today, right before I got here, to let me know that she had, well, I sent out an invitation to these students. Not everybody responds well, but Gabby was one that was interested, and so she entered into this contest with Detroit Lakes for art project, and she took first place. So that was really good. So she won the competition, and she drew, or painted a picture of a jingle dress dancer. So it was really neat. So hopefully we'll be, I'll be getting a copy of that, and I can maybe put it in the paper, do something, at least put it on our website. Speaking of something like that, that's one of the things I am working on as well is with the communication, is try to get that going a little, a little bit more, because it's not highlighted right now. So we're going to try to improve that. With this Native Pride Dance performance, the kids went over to the Shakopee High School, and they got an opportunity to perform for there. We'll see that in another photo coming up. And then the Native American College Fair, I went and took kids there. I recognized kids that were really interested, so I walked them around and explained them to them the difference between all the different colleges, whether it's a two-year, four-year degree, or, you know, to how you could move on, or if it was a technical college. They didn't really understand all those differences, so it was really neat and let them know the difference between a smaller college or a larger college. So it was a really good, good experience for us. Ready for the next one. Oh, see? I couldn't even push my own button. I thought someone was just automatically doing it for me. Okay, so, working with the teachers and students. I got to meet Ms. Pedretti just, I don't know, last week, I guess it was. All of a sudden, she emailed me and says, ah, hey, I know that you taught in this other class when you first got here about wild rice. You know, do you think you could do something for us? So boom, I was like, oh my gosh, I don't have more wild rice. My wild rice is up north, and I'm going to go to the store. Okay, so I went and got a bunch of wild rice. I went to her class. I put on a presentation for her. So here, it's a bunch of students in, oh, I don't even remember, the World's Cooking, yeah, World's Foods class. And so we cooked all these different, four types of wild rice, but I also put a video on that included how the Native Americans actually do it, that you go on the canoe and you have to use your knocking sticks and get the rice in there and how we do that. Ms. Pedretti was so amazed, she couldn't believe that. She's like, really? This is the rice I bought, this dark stuff? And I said, you can just throw that in the garbage. Don't, don't go to buy-oleys and get your rice. You got to get it from the rez. It was really great. We had a really fun experience. So I've, I've gone to a couple of different classes and taught whenever I was asked to. I have helped Emma in her class. I sent her over some cultural items. And I was working with Brandy when we did the teachers, what is it, the elementary, yeah, labs in the mornings. We went and did different presentations for the teachers. So I have a lot of ideas, a lot of knowledge, and it's just a matter of getting it out there and pushing it out. So working with the media specialists, I just all of a sudden have a big project with them that I'm going to work on. I'm going to work on getting a grant for us to get a bunch of books, so to promote the native culture a little bit more among maybe a couple other grants. I got lots of ideas, but just by being by myself, I don't have enough time, but I'll do the best I can. And so there, the, you know, the professional development, teachers and instructors, I know people are really hungry for knowledge, and I appreciate that, because a lot of people that I've met so far have been, I want to say, simple ignorance, just not knowing about the culture, not that they're necessarily being racial and not wanting to understand it, just really eager and hungry to have someone like myself to be able to teach them. So I'm moving forward with trying to do as many positive things as, as I can. And I do put in plenty of long days. I have had the custodian say, Karina, we're going to close the building. You need to go home. So oftentimes, my car's the last car in the parking lot. Go to the next one. Oh, see? See? I got it. Okay, so on the left here, we went over to the Shakopee High School, and we've got the Native American performers, the ones that I could get. One of the problems that happens is that children grow, and dance outfits are expensive, and they try to, you know, they get a dance outfit, and then they grow out of it, and they say, oh, my outfit doesn't fit anymore. I hear that over and over and over again. So I don't know, I'm going to try to work on something like that to rectify that problem. But here, they were performing there, and we've got a great guy that was there showing them how to do the eagle dance. We've got a powwow coming up this weekend at the Shakopee Tribe, isn't really announcing really well, because they are actually choosing their royalty, and it's, they're getting ready for their performance that they'll have on May 14th. So they do have a powwow on March 14th and May 14th. So we will be bussing kids over for that one on May 14th. And then I'm also on the committee for the South of the River Powwow, which is the first introduction for me for that. And we will be providing the meals for, for there. So I'm looking at doing a big catering thing here and following the rules for that, because me, I'd cook at home, and I'd cook for all these 400 people, but they're not going to let me, because we got to follow these catering regulations. So I just got to hand someone the money. The next photo there is when I first arrived, I was just like, oh, it was, it was so hard for me to do, to figure out everybody with all the schedules and the schools and meet this people, person, and meet this person. But I got it all together, and this was our, one of our first field trips, and we went to the Timberwolves game for Native American Heritage Night. And I got to get on the top of the list, and we got cut down the net. So only one school group gets to do that. So we did, did that, so everybody was pretty excited after the game, and that's what we did, is cut it down. And then I'm going to plan a couple more field trips. I have taken on membership for the Minnesota History Center, so I've gone over there to visit a few times, and I want to really get to know the building and know the people, and those are the ones that are helping me with the grant writing. I was previously- I was previously a grant writer and a mental health worker. So I, it's, you know, fit right in with engaging with the kids and doing things. And I, so I just need a higher participation level is what I need. Otherwise, the ones that I have met so far, everything's been really positive. Working with the American Indian Parent Committee. I've had kids that don't have clothes. I've, I've brought them clothes. I've brought them food. I've given transportation. I've done every, you know, a lot of things that I can to help these people and to, to build relationships with them. And I hope to be able to build more relationships with you all because way too many names for me to remember. So please forgive me if I don't always remember. Okay, all right. And then we say, Giga wabam in, because that means see you later. There is no goodbye in our language.
Thank you, Karina. I will go into personalized education a little bit more, but you're starting to hear some threads and you're starting to see the connections. When we talk about student engagement, when we talk about knowing our students deeply, both the cultures and experiences they bring to us and some of the motivators they have about who they are and what they wanna do and how they wanna learn. We'll talk a lot about, more about that soon. And the next presentation. One of the other strategies as a part of Reimagine Minnesota is really elevating student voice very intentionally and purposely to involve them in leadership and evolve them into making decisions and helping us better understand and improve school environment, curriculum, pedagogy, and everything related to the student experience. So I'm really excited to welcome Mackenzie Madison, Kirsten Nelson, and Sophia Raffaella. They are all Prior Lake High School CLR Lead Teachers. And they're gonna tell you a little bit about caring and committed conversations.
Hi, I'm Kirsten. I'm a biology teacher at Prior Lake High School. And part of our role that we've gotten to take on this year as the lead teachers is caring and committed conversations. This was brought to our attention by Mark Paulson and from Jordan Public Schools. And we have a great group of student leaders who have worked together in trying to create this place where students can have their voices heard, they can feel safe, and they can have authentic conversations with their selves and teachers. And so it's a group that meets once a quarter. And how it's structured is they get to come in, we try to make it a light atmosphere. They can feel welcome. They can be themselves. We have a bunch of tables, as you can see. We meet in the auditorium and we have anywhere from 60 to 80 students who show up on a morning. And through this, we have an activity to get them started, to kind of get them thinking about the topic. And then really, the, the point of this and the goal of this is to create a safe space for these kids. We'll have anywhere from like 10 kids about at a table with an adult or two. The role of the adults is simply to listen. Like Kevin said, the kids want us to hear them. They want to share their ideas. They know a lot. They're very wise. They wanna share their experiences. And so it's an opportunity for staff in our building to just sit and listen to what kids have to say. And so throughout that time, they get about an hour, hour and a half about a set topic. We talked about what does it mean to be an educated person? What's the place of hard history in our curriculum? Or just some of the examples. So then throughout the conversation, these kids get to share their experiences that they've had, both in the building, in other buildings, in other districts, out in public, all these different situations. Then throughout their conversation, at the end, it's, they wrap up their conversation. And they wrap up their conversations with three truths. And through this is, what are three truths of their conversation that they believe apply to everything? And I just wanna share a few of these truths. We get 20 at times, so we've had quite a few. But some of the truths that the students came up with, see a person as a person rather than their views. It is important to make connections with people. Normalize conversations about hard history and topics. Having a strong teacher-student relationship is important. And so as you can see, these conversations are really a great opportunity for students to have their voices heard, to feel important. And we think, you know, our goals, to build this school, community, and culture where kids feel validated in their, in who they are, has been really, really important. They get a place where they feel their voice is heard. They're making new relationships with students. They're making new relationships with teachers and other adults in the building. Also, it's a safe place for these kids. They really get to be open and honest. Sometimes as an adult, it's really hard to hear what the kids have to say. But it's really important for us to hear those conversations. And it's a great way for us to build empathy and understanding among both the staff and the students because we truly get to understand students' experiences and their point of view.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie. I'm an English teacher at the high school. Basically, Kirsten just took like half of what I was gonna say. So we probably should have practiced. But really, kind of my, our major takeaway from this is really that our direct impact on our teaching. It's wonderful to have conversations with students. I would say 100%, this has been the best PD I've ever had. And it's simply conversations that we are able to have with our students. And from this, we, I've been able to take students that I've seen in the hall, or like maybe not in class where there should be, and be able to just go up to them and have a full conversation by name and be able to say like, what's going on? What are you, where are you supposed to be? And even just a simple, because I know them and I have a relationship with them, there's so much growth to be had that wasn't able to be had before. And so our biggest kind of takeaway, as we look at what teachers have said, there's quotes up on the slides. I don't have to read them to you. But really, we can see specifically what we need to do with us as teachers. We talk a lot and our students are like, we don't see necessarily like what's happening. Like the so what, or the why, or the action, the result of caring and committed conversations. And really, if we look at, at a conversation with our leadership team last week, and like, the big idea is that we have been able to do things because of what students have told us. And so I will say, like, for the English department, we have specifically made strategic plans with curriculum and content and just our calendar in general because of what students have shared through caring conversations. I know that we have specifically purchased texts because of what students have said. And I can only speak for the English department because of our hangout. But really, we just wanna like take away, your major takeaway, if you're to remember one thing from our presentation, is that caring conversations has truly impacted our school. And we would like all of our teachers throughout the district to be able to be a part of it because it truly has impacted everything.
Thank you. Thank you, Mackenzie and Kirsten. Incredible work. And I really invite you to try to attend one of those if you can. It is like nothing I've ever really experienced in terms of elevating and really hearing from students about what their experience is like. The last part I'll touch on is about cultural inclusivity. And that's developing and implementing culturally inclusive standards, curriculum, and a comprehensive system and assessment. And as Mackenzie alluded to, in our work with curriculum review, we use an equity lens. And we look at, when we review data from a program for ELA or for social studies or for math, or whatever it might be, we really look at who is being served really well by this program, by K-12 ELA, by K-12 social studies? Who's not? Who are some of our students, who are our populations who are underserved? And that's when we uncover gender gaps. We uncover gaps predictable by demographics, by free and reduced price lunch, or things like that. We uncover these gaps and we work to, to mitigate them and we work to reduce them. So in ELA, as Mackenzie alluded to, one of the things we do with all curriculum groups is we develop a criteria for resource selection. So as we're starting to look at resources, texts, other resources, what makes it good? You know, obviously, much of that is alignment to standards, rigorous text or content. But also, who does it represent and how are people represented in it? So in ELA, one of the things we're working on is increasing the diversity of texts. High school ELA has a, a history in many districts of, of being full of lots of dead authors or people who may not be as relevant to current students. And we're working to change that, to, to help students see themselves in both the, the things that they read and the things that they experience so that they are more engaged in the curriculum. That is not at the expense of rigor, or that is not at the expense of any kind of quality. In social studies, we've used a tool from the Minnesota Humanity Center. It's called an absent narrative resource assessment tool. And what that really does is it asks teachers to really interrogate their own resources through an equity lens. To think about, when we look at a social studies text, for example, how are peoples represented? Are native peoples, for example, are they represented as only relegated to the past? Or are they represented as thriving cultures and peoples of, of right now? Are people represented positively or negatively? To really think about the resources that we have with the knowledge that no resource is gonna be perfect. But how do we supplement? How do we bring that broader awareness to kids so that they're not just inhaling everything that may be represented in a textbook? There's a broader context there. And you'll see some of their criteria for resource selection as well. So I hope through this and through hearing our teachers and our staff talk about some of the work they are doing and leading, both in their classrooms and in their schools, you're able to see some of this work in a different light. And you're able to see beyond, you know, maybe a line item on a budget or simply a, a presentation that you may have popped into. But you're able to see some of the ways it's affecting both our teachers and our students every day. With that, any questions or discussion?
Questions? Michael?
I'll just make a comment. First of all, thank you to everybody for your work and for coming forward to speak. I think hearing what's happening in the front lines and on the classroom helps us as a board much better deal with questions that come to us, or setting direction or tone, or even looking at budgets. So thank you for that. I'm sorry your hours are so long. But I also wanted to just say that it's, and I just lost my train of thought because I was so busy focusing on thanking you, but I will come back to that. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. Thank you. I think honestly, I've been hearing about this type of work for quite a few years now. And this is the most I've ever understood, to be quite honest. So I really do appreciate that because, you know, I know the work is extremely important. And so the more that I can understand, I, I really appreciate. Just a couple comments and questions on the caring conversations. I know I've heard some really good feedback and I really appreciate the teacher's perspective. Is four times a year enough?
It's one of the things, yeah.
Would be my question. And I know middle school, how often are they doing it? I know they've just started it.
Yeah, started, yeah. So they're, they're working towards more monthly, you know, kind of starting to build some things up. We also, I was just meeting with our Achievement and Integration Collaborative, Jordan and Shakopee, earlier today. And we are going to hold another cross-district caring and committed conversation in April 16th, I believe. So it kind of keeps some of that momentum up. It keeps us as districts feeding each other, kind of thinking about some of the issues that have come up. You know, some of the things that have, have come up through those conversations are, you know, students expressing the need for college and career help for first-generation college students, for example, or first generation, you know. If, if students don't have necessarily the resources, some of the background information, that we want them to be able to apply to the best colleges or post-secondary opportunities that they can. And so there's been quite a bit of low-hanging fruit that's come out of it that we can really address pretty quickly to get students just the support they need and that the support they're asking for. And one of my favorite things is it costs very little, to almost nothing. And the amount we get out of it, both in teacher mindset, professional development, and things to improve our current system is just invaluable. So quarterly, it's, it's a balance, you know. So it's a balance between getting a big group of students together. I think there could be opportunities for increasing that in the future, but we're kind of letting this develop this year.
Okay, yeah, just a couple other questions. So as far as students having access to it, is, are they self-identifying and just going? And when they hear about the conversation, I mean, how, you know, in the middle school, how's that working? You know, as far as people getting to there?
So at the high school level, and Mark Paulson and the CLR Resource Teachers, I believe, and some of the leaders that show up.
I was gonna help you answer.
Come on in.
So to first, your, your first question, Stacy. So we decided that it would lose a lot of its momentum if we did it super frequently, especially because kids miss Laker time and their first hour to be a part of it. And so a lot of kids were like, I can't miss Laker time. So, which we, we're okay with. So we'd like them to be learning in their classes. But then we also have started several groups outside of caring conversations as a result. And so I'd say caring conversations is like a diving board to like other different things that are also going on. So Power, our Power group would be an example of that. And a couple of other organizations that students have now started as a result.
So while you're up here, can I follow?
Yeah, yeah.
Just what you were saying about, you know, the students hearing, so I'm just sitting here talking, I'm telling my story. And yes, you're hearing me, but you were talking about some of the action that the English group has done. That feedback is, is that going back to the kids?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure they know it's worth it to come.
Yeah, so we talked, this last caring, or two caring conversations ago, I talked about what we had done as the English department for them to kind of see that. But that is something that we are working on, is kind of like the follow-up and like the next steps, right? A conversation is wonderful, but if students don't see a line, right, of action steps or whatever else, then it's kind of hard to find that motivation to keep going, just like you said. And so we're working on kind of open, opening our lines of communication a little bit too in regards to like, do you see this cool thing that we have done as a result? So, yeah, it's still a work in progress.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
And then what was your, what was your second question?
Well, I just, and in far as the middle school kids having access, I mean, like, high school kids can advocate a lot for themselves. And so middle school and, you know, maybe even younger, I don't know how far we're going down, but how, how are they advocating?
Yeah, so our guidance team recently went to the high school to observe with some of our middle school CLR teachers. And we brought probably 18 middle school students with us to participate with the high school students. So now that has become our leadership team at the middle school level. And we're planning our first conversation late April after MCA testing.
So just kind of announcing it to the group, saying that this is, I mean, they're gonna all our welcome, is that?
We're still figuring that out. So it's gonna be during seventh hour and then win time on Wednesdays. So we're, yeah, right now, it's just the leadership team. And then we're figuring out how to get the invite out to students. And we want it to be voluntary, come as you are. But we also can't have 300 students show up. So we're still kind of figuring out the logistics and working with our middle school students to make it happen.
All right, cool.
I would say we're similar. It started out as like come up with a list of friends when we brought our leadership team to Jordan. Come with a list of friends that you think would, one, bring value to the conversation and two, take something away from the conversation. So they had to come up with a list of students. We asked a couple of teachers to kind of come up with lists as well. And now we're working on for our last, I was gonna say fall, fourth quarter caring conversations, we're working with teachers to kind of announce it to their classes because a lot of kids know what it is kind of, but don't understand kind of the full, I guess, answer. And so we're working with kind of brainstorming ideas and how to get the word out there to make sure, like, was said, not 400 kids, but getting more.
Right.
Okay, I wanted to make comment on that too. I've been involved with the caring and committed conversations since the beginning. Mark invited me and I actually opened up for the first session that we held on the first quarter. And I noticed that there weren't any Native kids there. And of course, I'm, you know, busy doing a lot of things and I go to the next one, no Native kids there. And I thought, okay, so I inquired and I asked. So I got to invite some kids there and I had four of them that showed up. And they all, but they were a little, they were a little late. They weren't there right away. So I thought, oh no, I don't have anybody here. But then they came. And then all of a sudden, I realized, one got up, walked away, never came back. Then someone else said, can I use the bathroom? Yep, go ahead. Never came back. Then someone else got up, left, never came back. The one kid that stayed was sitting basically next to me. He was probably scared to leave because he was next to me at my table. But I'm just trying to look into that because I know traditionally with Native Americans, they tend to be a little more quiet and reserved. And they really don't like the attention drawn to them to, you know, to pick on someone and say, hey, John, you know, over there, you know, tell me, what's your answer? And they just clam up. And they don't like to really, you know, be, have that attention brought to them. And plus, the no eye, no eye contact thing is, we believe that when you're looking in the depths, are you looking straight into someone's eyes? You're looking in the depths of their soul. So traditionally, with Native Americans, you tend to look away. And within the non-traditional society, then people are saying, you know, you looked them in the eye. So it's, it's really hard for me to get the kids to want to be there and be engaged. But I think it'd be a great thing to, if I, if I can get some of those that are a little more outgoing and willing to participate.
Yep. So, you know, obviously, we have a lot of great leaders here, teacher leaders, that have done some extensive training. And I just wanna be refreshed on what our staff as a whole has done. And then, you know, these, these educators obviously can talk this very well and know this. And how much, you know, of our staff is at this level? You know, where are we at along the progression of, you know, getting people? I'd love to see everybody as knowledgeable and, you know, so like, what's the plan there?
So simply put, we're in the middle. I guess if there's, you know, a simple answer to that, all staff have had foundational training with Dr. Holly about understanding the rings of culture, about understanding who our kids are and who we are, you know, really culturally and who we, and what we bring, both in terms of culture to our own work as educators and what our students bring to us. So all staff have had that. So, all staff have had that over several years. We've had cadres, which is intensive coaching on an individual teacher level in every building. In some buildings, many, many, multiple cadres. I think the high school, we've had at least three or four. Middle school, we've had several. Many of the elementaries are on their second or third. So, we've had cadres at every building, and that's really about learning strategies, learning the why of the strategies, and then putting the strategies in action and getting observed using the strategies by outside observers and getting some feedback on that. So, it's really, and it's no holds barred feedback, you know, it's, what was that? What were you thinking? How did that work? But just getting teachers to really think about using the strategies for enhancing student engagement and seeing if they're working. We've also continued professional learning, both with Dr. Holly and with some of our internal talent, to be honest with you. So, I think of all of the CLR lead teachers at every building, every single week, they are sending out little notes, little suggestions, things to try in math, things to try in social studies, things to keep an eye on. They're leading professional learning at staff meetings. They are, you know, sending out reminder bulletins. They are open to being observed themselves, so that the other teachers can say, "Oh, that's what this is? Okay." And that's often the reaction, where some teachers who are maybe in the middle or on the fence, if they're able to see another teacher doing some of these strategies or bringing this to life, they're like, "Oh, I can do that, no problem." And they see the connections with things like responsive classroom. They see the connections with balanced literacy and things like that. So, they see how it fits into the work they're already doing. It's not a separate thing that's spinning over here. So, in terms of raw numbers, that's hard to put a real, you know, it's hard to put a number on. I think, you know, some of the work we've done, as Brandy mentioned, peer coaching, that reaches everyone. That reaches every teacher and certified staff member of the district to get them to reflect on how they are bringing equity to life in their own work, whether it's through counseling or teaching or whatever they're doing. So, that's in everyone. It's a tough question to answer. I mean, we're not there yet, I'll tell you that.
From us talking about it two years ago, like, how are we doing?
Huge gains, huge gains in terms of people seeing not as a separate thing or a separate, you know, aspect, but just as a way to integrate and make their own teaching better, more engaging for kids and more relevant to kids.
So, there's, Mackenzie's word was momentum.
Absolutely, huge. And, you know, I think of a lot of this work, most of what you've seen in this presentation four years ago, five years ago, we wouldn't have been talking about, nor would we have any background or foundation in. So, huge, huge gains in a short time.
Did you have a question?
I want to reiterate Michael's comment about how great it is to see all of you here. You're always grateful when you see us in the schools. It's likewise, we love to see you guys here and love your participation in this. That is the reason why it's so much easier to understand it is because teachers taught us about it tonight. Funny how that works.
Yeah, I was a teacher. Absolutely.
I'm curious, the impact on our students. So, clearly, one of the purposes of this is to have an impact on our students of different classes and minorities and our, you know, that class of student. I'm curious if anybody can speak to the impact it's having on the rest of our kids to be in an environment that's maybe respecting their peers a little more?
Yeah, absolutely. Saw some hands go up.
How are the Norwegians handling it?
So, very open and honest, the very, we did one last year, and then the first couple caring conversations were majority-minority kids. We didn't have many white kids. We made an effort last quarter to go out and find those kids, to have them in a conversation, and I had one specifically that I had a conversation with. She's in my class, and so, I pulled her aside after class, I was like, "What did you think of this morning?" She's like, "It was so cool." She's like, "I had no idea about this." She's like, "I can't wait to bring my friends next quarter." I think there's a lot of, I think the word to put it is simple ignorance, right? A lot of our kids just don't know. And I think opening those eyes to those, the majority population of what the marginalized groups go through on a day-to-day basis was very eye-opening for some of our students. We have a long ways to go, bringing all of our group, all of our student groups together, but the one experience was very positive.
Thank you. I would say, simply put, we want all of our school communities to be a place where everyone belongs, everyone sees themselves, everyone's comfortable, everyone's there to learn. So, all of this work makes a great stride in that. Diana, I saw your hand, if you want to share?
Yeah. Really, I think what sold me on this more than anything in my classroom was I've seen it affect positively all the students. And honestly, one of the biggest changes, positive changes I've seen is students that are shy, doesn't matter what color, what race, you know, what sex they are, is students are feeling more comfortable and confident to share and to be themselves and to bring their voice into the classroom. That's what I'm seeing.
Thank you.
I just, I just want to return to my lost thought because I found it quickly. And just to kind of reiterate, when you said, you know, four years ago, you weren't at a place to do this work, and I'm wondering how many teachers, maybe even in this room or coaches, felt like, "One more thing we need to incorporate into the classroom," because there is a lot of that put on teachers. But I have to say, as a board, or at least speaking for myself, to hear you and hear so effervescent and energized, it's contagious, but it also helps us to know that the work you are taking on, which we are grateful for, that you're feeling the impact of it, and it's making you a more enthusiastic teacher in the classroom, and that helps us serve our kids. And all of our kids are more likely to fulfill our mission, to send them out into the real world with the skills they need. So, thank you for that.
Absolutely. You saw the words fun, engaging appear on so many of the slides. Absolutely.
Anyone else?
Mr. Drews, I actually had a comment. We, Mr. Paulson actually came with Dr. Bezig and talked to the student council, and we encouraged our kids to go, we encouraged the council to go. And we had, I didn't get quite right numbers, I don't know quite how many people we had go, but we had great positive feedback when we talked about it at our next meeting after the caring conversations, because we did tell them, we said, "You more than likely will be the minority at a table for once." And that was really impactful for these kids because, you know, we represent the student body, and we represent everybody and who we, we actually probably have one of our most diverse councils this year. And so, it was really great to see these kids getting out there and realizing, you know, I'm just like them. And kind of like, has been brought up, the simple ignorance and just not knowing what marginalized groups go through. And so, we brought it back to council, and they all had really good feedback on it, and it was all very positive, and they were able to learn.
Awesome.
Mary?
First of all, thank you very much for all of this and also for the engagement of the board. I think that's really, really good. I want to go back to something. In Brandy's conversation, she talked about different zoning issues, and I was a little confused about what zoning were, was?
You know, I think she was referring to just issues that come up in society, you know what I mean? That students have to wrestle with, whether it's, you know, historical issues or current issues that, you know, I think that's Brandy?
Yeah, exactly.
That's what I'm referring to, yeah.
Okay, that was one thing that I didn't quite understand. Now, we also talked to kind of a little about the size of the caring committed conversations. So, when you're putting this message out to everybody, what happens if three hundred kids show up? I mean, are you?
Then we have a good, happy problem, to be honest with you. And we, that's when we need to start finding, you know, multiple times a quarter for different groups. We start looking for a bigger space, I don't know where we'd find one at the moment, but we had, that's a good problem to have, honestly. When our students are engaged, especially from conversation to conversation, and they want to both keep, you know, elevating their voice and helping the work move forward, it's a really happy problem to have. And I'm really excited to help and see the middle school start to work there because we're building our future leaders, you know? We can't be too reliant on our seniors right now because they're not too far from leaving us.
You know, Karina brought up an excellent point about the different cultures when you put them together, because some cultures are not comfortable with certain settings, et cetera. And it also, so I like the fact that that was noted, and it's something that we need to work on. But I am kind of curious about one thing is that when the underrepresented populations, so to speak, go into these environments and they're talking one-on-one with teachers and whoever shows up, has it, is, it's one thing to have that, those conversations, but it's sometimes more impactful to have representatives of their cultures, as Karina is, in there so they have somebody to actually, who understands them. It's not just talking to a teacher, trying to, you know, tell them and share with them their experiences. They actually have some people in the room that represent them in general. How, what are the diversity issues within those groups, and how are we addressing that?
Our, I mean, to be blunt, our teaching staff, our certified staff is primarily white, as is many districts. So, what has been really impressive and heartening is the amount of learning our teachers are hungry for, to learn about how to better serve every single student, you know, how to better serve our students with dyslexia perhaps, or how to better serve our Muslim students or our students from East African cultures. So, our teachers are really hungry to learn more and to bring it to their classrooms, to better build relationships with kids. I mean, one of the things, even me, I mean, I participate in most of these, everyone I can get to, and I know kids at the high school. I can stop by, I can be like, "Hey, yeah." You know, I have a relationship with students which really fills my cup as well. So, it's really all about just breaking down some of those barriers that we build, you know, whether it's chemistry teacher to student or some of those other things, when it's just like, you know, we are all people in a place seeking to make our lives better, you know, whether we're educators or students, that's what we're all there for. So, in terms of helping, you know, diversify the group, we invite every cultural liaison we have, and we also invite other, you know, we have connections with Shakopee and Jordan too, who help us, you know, with some of those things as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You got somebody behind you that wants to talk.
One really important piece of this, I want to make sure gets on the table, which is, in talking with our student leaders, which are really the heart and soul of this whole thing, one thing we've talked about in specifically is that notion of the simple ignorance, that they don't think our other students are mean or racist. They, but what happens is, is little slights happen here and there, and they get knocked down, and they get knocked down. And we don't want to be in a position of constantly responding to a kid who got knocked down. What this is about is building them up, building them up, building them up. So, when that thing happens, they don't fall so far or so hard. And then, we're there again to pick them up as well, but now they're picking each other up. And it's called, you may have heard the term affinity group. You know, a lot of our students might be the only Muslim or the only black or the only Hispanic student in a class. And so, they don't, when they look around, they don't have a natural ally of comfort when hard conversations come up. So, you know, one of the goals is to keep these conversations a really safe place, but I just really want to make sure and give credit where credit is due, that a big part of this is about building up and welcoming them and making them feel like this is where they belong, so that when those other little things happen, they have that resilience, they have that deposit of, this is my school too already there. And so, it's easier for them to both address that when it happens in a positive way, but also have that support group in place. So, it's both about broadening our understanding, but I really want to also emphasize that notion of we're, this is building the kids up. It's a positive growth experience for the students as well as an educational one. I didn't mean to jump in, I just wanted to get that piece on the table.
Thanks. I just want to thank you all for being here as well, actually, all of you, the board, our administrative team, and this incredible teacher group in front of us. You have been learners and leaders through this entire process, and you've taken risks, and you've wondered things, and you've done exactly the same things that we're asking students to do every day. So, thank you for that. We know relationships matter, and we know the way, only way we're going to help all students reach their full potential is if we continue to support them at the individual level, which you're doing. The other just context piece that I wanted to make a connection on tonight, because I don't know that I've done a very good job making this connection, is it was four years ago when we engaged in a World Cafe at Hidden Oaks Middle School with Shakopee and Eden Prairie Schools. We were one site of, I think, twelve across the metro, where we had two hundred and fifty voices in this World Cafe that then joined three thousand other voices across the metro. Those three thousand voices contributed to the nine Reimagine Minnesota strategies. And we've continued to work on, as we look at our strategic plan, how we align our work, and our work is aligned to those nine strategies of Reimagine Minnesota. So, I just wanted to remind us that that was four years ago. And now, as Kevin and all of you are presenting this and looking at our strategic plan and the multiple places that we're growing and learning together is really remarkable. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think you get to stay up here, Kevin.
Get some more. All right. Good evening again, chair, committee board members, Dr. Stell. I'm really excited to share our work with Personalized Learning, represented by the Laker Learning Compass. It's, what is happening with the mouse up there? PDSA 1A. You have heard some of the key themes that drive this work. You've heard the words student-centered, student-driven, engagement. You've heard that in the previous presentation. You're going to hear a lot more of that in this presentation too. So, we are going to review a little bit of the background of the Laker Learning Compass, some updates from 2019 and '20, and strategies in action for more of our incredible teachers and staff. This work is aligned again with Strategic Direction A, and it is represented by this compass. Starting last year, we had every teacher and instructional leader and staff person really engage in a thought process, kind of a simple thing of, what does great teaching and learning look like in Prairie Lakes Xavier schools? And everyone, in kind of a silent chalk-talk activity, wrote various things. We want it to be student-centered, we want it to be engaging, we want it to be relevant, we want it to be hands-on, we want it to be standards-driven, we want it to be rigorous, we want it to be differentiated, we want it to be lots and lots of different things. And what we did is, did some qualitative analysis, pulled out the themes from every single one of those words that was written by all of our teachers and staff, and used that to drive the development of this framework. The key, the three super, or larger themes that emerged were, we want learning to be personalized, we want learning to be purposeful, and we want learning to be empowered. In this, there's a shifting role of the teacher, and you're starting to hear it from some of the teachers in the previous presentation as well, from being something that is fully teacher-directed, of being kind of that sage on the stage in front of the classroom, to being more of a facilitator of student learning. And you're going to see and hear some incredible examples of that from some of our teachers who are on the front end of this, who are leading and learning in their own classrooms and across their own buildings to drive this work forward, really built on knowing our students and engaging all of our students. So, when we think about learning being purposeful, we want it to be aligned with Minnesota state standards and larger outcomes, both that are driven by occupational demands, that are driven by higher ed demands. We want it to be aligned with the rigor we expect and know that the standards demand and know that opportunities beyond high school demand. We want students to have authentic assessment opportunities so that they have real ways to demonstrate what they've learned. And we want teachers to provide feedback continually and progressively to allow students to take on some of that reflection on their own learning and allow them to set their own goals and drive their own learning in that way. When we think about learning that is personalized, we think about learning that's responsive to our students' cultures and experiences. So, like us, we, our students all bring different backgrounds, cultures, experiences to our classrooms, and we should be responsive to that. We want resources that are appropriately challenging and supportive, and we want learning that is relevant to the outside world. I forget who, I think it was Emma, or maybe Diana, who brought up, "This is a dance. This is not a spectrum of bad to good. Teacher-directed is not bad, and student-driven isn't always good. It's a dance of knowing when, when the right strategy and approach is situationally appropriate. When is the right time for that?" So, as Diana mentioned, you know, sometimes doing more engaging CLR activities allows students to be more engaged when it is time for some teacher-directed direct instruction. So, this is a, we're all about building teachers' competencies to bring that to life for students when it's appropriate. When we think about learning that is empowered, we want teachers to model the growth mindset that we want our students to demonstrate. One of the things we know, and one of the few things we can really predict about the future, is that it is unpredictable and that it will be dramatically different from what it is right now. In ten years, in twenty years, in thirty years, we can expect a pretty dramatically different world for our students to emerge into. world for our students to emerge into. We know that they will need to be learners, they will need, may need to reinvent themselves in multiple careers and multiple pathways throughout their lives. That's just a fact of what it is now. We want them to be driven, persistent, and creative learners in that. We also want teachers and students to collaborate, to make choices around use of space and around how students work individually, or in pairs, or in groups. You've seen a lot of updates on some of the really beautiful spaces that we have emerging in the district at every single building, and those spaces are really intentionally designed to allow teachers to do that, and we're seeing it right away with some of the new pod spaces at the high school. I'm seeing teachers do things that were really difficult to do before, just because of the layout of their classrooms or their spaces. So it's exciting to see. So without further ado, I am going to invite some more of our amazing teachers and staff, and I'll ask you again just to please hold questions to the end, to show you some of this work in action. Vicky Jensen is a Jeffers Pond third grade teacher, and she's going to tell you a little bit about guided math.
Hello. I'm Vicky Jensen, I'm a third grade teacher at Jeffers Pond, and one way at the elementary level that we are trying to personalize learning is through guided math. And there are lots of amazing teachers, there are lots of ways to structure guided math, but in general guided math is a flexible structure for meeting the needs of all students in math. And I'll just give you a peek into how it works, or how we're, we're kind of using it in our classroom. We start off with a whole group, so kids come down with their math notebooks, or their whiteboards, and we go through some, a little bit of math warm-ups, and spiraling back, excuse me, spiraling back to some of our previous learned concepts, just to keep us fresh on those. And then we sort of go through our mini lesson. I introduce some of the concepts that we're going to be working on, or some of the, the skills. We do a lot of math talk, we talk a lot in math about how the great thing about math is there's so many different ways to solve things, there's so many great ways to think about things. So we do a lot of math talk with that, we do a lot of introducing of the vocabulary that we're going to be using with these concepts, and they just sort of get a peek into, what are we going to be working on, this is what we're going to be trying, we're going to try a little bit together. And then they sort of head off to work in these flexible small groups. The small groups are formed in lots of different ways, it's based, the kids are grouped by similar needs, and that's through lots of different formative and summative assessments. So we do a lot of pre-assessing before the unit to sort of see where their needs are. We do a lot of, as we're working on the rug, I'm sort of looking around to see where everybody is with things, and, and sort of forming groups from that. And sometimes I'll learn to do something, and I'll say, okay, how are you feeling about it? This is what we're going to be working on, so you tell me what's going to work for you as a learner. Do you want to work with Mrs. Jensen? Do you want to work on your own? Do you want to work with a partner? What's going to, what's going to work best for you? So we have our flexible small groups, so part of one of those small groups is working with me. At times, other times, they have different activities that they're working on, so that can be, and those are matched to the students' needs and their interests. So it could be applying those skills to real worlds, real-world situations, it could be working with manipulatives, it could be math games, it could be technology, it's really what each learner needs for the, the skills and strategies that we're working on. After we sort of get through all of our small group stuff, then we come back to the rug, and we sort of wrap up, and how are you feeling? They often, we review the work that we worked on, they share their work, and we do again a little, a lot of math talk and sharing, some exit slips, and all of that helps forms group again for the next day. So the biggest impact on my teaching has been that I really know my kids as mathematicians. I really know what each, each kiddo needs, because there's so many times that I check in with them, and there's so many times that I can sort of see what they're thinking and see, and see what they need as learners. For the impact on students, it was really interesting, our sharing at morning meeting the other day was, tell me, how does guided math help you as a learner? What is, what is the impact on your learning? And they shared lots of great things, but their, their, their biggest thing was their engagement. They are so excited to work with their partners, they are so excited to work on the, the math that, that they need. They recognize that, that lots of different kids are working on lots of different things, that they all have different needs, and that it's, it's, we've seen some really good growth in both the formative and some, some of the assessments, with map testing and MCAs and our unit tests. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. This is a real art. When you see it in action, it can look chaotic, but what you're seeing is students getting their needs met, and students really getting that connection with the teacher to move them forward. Next up, we have Kristen Stout, she's a Twin Oaks English teacher, and she's going to tell you a little bit about pre-assessment and individualized learning plans in her classroom.
I'm also a reading interventionist, so I kind of play two different roles, and that really, I think, impacts what I do in my classroom, and looking at the individual student, because that's what I do as an interventionist really. I kept seeing the same errors over and over again in my kids' writing, and I was like, what am I going to do? And so I decided to try a diagnostic pre-assessment on them, and just to see where they're at, and kind of group them out that way. And it, it helped me decide what areas I needed to teach and who needed it, because not everybody needed X, Y, and Z, and it just, it worked out that I could just kind of divide it all out. And so that's kind of how it started, and then since then, I've just really started looking at their daily work, their formative assessments, their summative assessments, and taking those where they're not quite meeting the expectations of the learning targets, and I'm giving them work to do to continue to work on those individually. I started doing, we call them personalized learning days in my class, and we sit there, and the kids are assigned different work, based on the learning targets that I think so far that they're not quite meeting, based on what assessments we've looked at. During that time, I pull those small groups, and work one-on-one with the kids that need a little further instruction. The rest of the kids all have their learning assignments that they're doing. Through Schoology is how they know what to do. So I've vigilantly assigned them a folder, and in that folder is a variety of resources for them to choose from, look at, see what they need to do, and then they have some type of assessment at some point for them to check in, where are they at? Have they mastered it? Do they still need work? Not quite there yet. And so based on those assessments, I'll keep pulling different groups again. And we do that a couple times in a month, doesn't end right there. Anytime they finish something, they always know that personalized learning folder is right there waiting for them for something to do. And so each kid has, the cool thing about Schoology is you can assign different assignments to them. So not everybody has the same assignment, they're all on their own. This is the kind of different assessments we've used. Through Schoology, I can look, drill it down to the question, who didn't get that question? And who needs a little more help? Who's mastered it? Where are we at? And then in the gradebook, I can put it in there for parents, so they know, and the kids know, mastered, not quite, still need a lot of work. And the best part is at the end of each, like, personalized learning day that we do, I give the kids an exit ticket. And on that ticket, they're taking, telling me, this is what I need help with, this is where I'm at, I feel good about this, I learned this today, can you help me further move forward I would say the biggest thing on my, impact on my teaching is the ability to use those diagnostics to really drill into my kids. I know what they need. I know where they're struggling, I know they're exceeding, and it really gives me that chance to really personalize it to each of them. I get time to work with them one-on-one, which is really hard to do in a class of 35. It's really hard to sit down one-on-one and help Johnny over here when Suzie over here has a question. This way, they all have something to work on, and it's like a well-oiled machine. They just go right to their folder, they have their stuff, they do their thing. I'm pulling groups left and right, three minutes here, five minutes there, whatever it needs to be, and then they just go back and do their thing. And they just kind of, just keep going. It's been a really cool experience for me. The kids keep asking for it. Hey, when's our next personalized learning day? When are we going to do it again? Which is really, as a teacher, hey, that was impactful, that worked, this is good. The students are really able to do their own thing. They work at their pace, they're getting what they need, it's their goals, it's their needs, and they're really learning what they need. They're sitting, they get to take ownership of their learning, which is another really big thing. The biggest impact though, I think, is in that grid at the bottom. At the beginning of the year, we have a baseline test. It's like a sixth grade, all English kids take it. My students were at 53%. Not so good. They were not hitting the targets. Our goal was to get to 70% by the end of the year. Midpoint check was 81%. We're there, we've already got there. Okay, now what's next? So that was a huge, huge, huge thing for me, to see what we're doing is working, and what can we do to keep that ball going, so.
Thank you, Kristen. More of my fellow English teachers. Emily Albrecht is a Hidden Oaks English teacher. And you will see some similarities in these, in that these teachers are seamlessly integrating technology. They're not doing technology for technology's sake, they're using tools like Schoology, and you'll see several more in Emily's presentation, to seamlessly drive students' work and allow that individualization. So Emily Albrecht will tell you a little bit about personalized learning in sixth grade English again.
Hi, again, my name is Emily Albrecht. I've been in the district by 20th year this year. Feeling pretty awesome, even at Isabel. Yes. So I'm going to talk about short story learning menus, and really it was me grappling with, I kind of live in two worlds. I facilitate for a master's program for St. Mary's University, which is 100% personalized learning. I mean, it's basically all I do with the adult learners that I teach. And then I felt like I was coming back to sixth grade English, and we just, I couldn't make it live in my daily life. We had great short story curriculum, we were really giving kids authentic literature experiences, but I just felt like there wasn't that ownership, kids kind of getting too enriched at their own level, and tied with, as a teacher, there's a lot on our plates. We need to differentiate, we need to personalize, we need to make sure kids are meeting the learning targets, and I just felt like, how can I make something that gets to what students need and what I need to accomplish? So I came up with, took a short story we were already using, already teaching, and I made a short story, "Learning Menu." And I really tried to approach it how I want to learn. Earlier this year, I wanted to learn about some digital design on the iPad, and I literally sat down at my computer and Googled it, and found a website, and then watched the video, and it took me to another link, and eventually had curated this kind of set of materials that I learned from. And I thought, kids can do this, they love technology. And so I took, for example, one of the stories is "The Bracelet," and it's a story about a girl experiencing being interned during the Japanese internment after the bombing of Pearl Harbor. And it's a really, really sensitive subject matter, and I wanted to make sure kids got to the root of this time in our history, why it's important, why these people were marginalized. And so we started with genre background in the menu. And if you, can I go to the next slide? This is one of them, this was for a football one we did, but the bracelet one, kids started with genre background. I curated four websites that they could go to, to learn about realistic fiction, they only had to choose two. And then on their product slide deck, which was assigned in Schoology, Kristen and I, we love individually assigning things in Schoology, they then would do their product. So they would learn, and then they'd have to produce some sort of product. And the cool thing about Schoology, as I'll go forward a little bit, is when kids do the assignment in Schoology, I can see everybody's in real time in Schoology. So while my students were around the room, learning about Pearl Harbor and the bombing, and what happened to Japanese, and they were putting, answering in their slide deck, I could see it in real time. I could go right to a student that had a misconception, and have a quick one-minute conversation before they got too deep in. I'm also a co-taught teacher, so I teach with a special ed teacher, and we use these as formative assessments. Every day, we have a common prep, we would sit down, look at the slides for that day, see where, you know what, there's like seven kids that really are not understanding the sequence of this story, kind of the plot, and the next day, we would take, I'd take 15 kids, she would take 15 kids, and we'd teach a little more individualized lesson to those groups. The next day, it could be four kids, but we were holding little mini seminars, as we were seeing in real time the work students were doing. And it really came down to addressing the four plus one, you know? What do we want kids to learn? All of this is grounded in learning targets, the kids know it, it's the first slide in their slide deck. They know the learning target and where they have to be, and then how will we know they've learned it? Built-in, here's formative assessment. I don't have to do anything extra, I don't have to give an exit slip, it's all embedded into what the kids are doing. And then what do we do if they're not learning it? We hold those seminars, we reteach. We had a day last week where we were like, whoa, nobody is getting it. And we did, whole group, came back the next day, everybody had the lesson again, and then we sent them back out. The other thing kids get to do with this, they can self-group or self-partner at any point. If you want to work on your, the menu, there's a bingo menu that they do, if you want to pair up, you can pair up, you want to work on your own, so it's constant movement. I'm one of the very lucky ones who got one of the brand-new classrooms at Hidden Oaks. I literally have the best view in the district, I'm pretty sure, and, it's amazing. It's like a snow globe in the wintertime. And, and I have this pod space and all this flexible furniture, and it's constant movement and rearrangement. It's amazing. And then finally, how will we respond if they already know it? This has built-in exploration enrichment. If you want to keep going with Pearl Harbor, I mean, I had kids that were finding out websites and videos and information that I could have never found for them. It was just awesome. And really what it comes down to is, I want my students to be engaged. And I thought, when I stand at the front of the room, really, you don't know what engagement you have. You might have 10%, because two could be listening, five are doing something else. And I found when I did activities like this, I would look around the room, 100%, every kid was in it. And I just thought, well, I'm going to go to sleep tonight happy, because that's what I want, them to engage in the content, the stories, dig in deep, find the skills, and then finally, the very end of it, we do let them choose how they want to be assessed. We give four options, they're all based on the same learning target rubric. So no matter which assessment you choose, every kid gets assessed using the same rubric. They assess themselves first on the four learning targets, whether they exceeded it, met it, partially met, did not meet, and then they have to write where there was evidence in their assessment of that learning target. So at the end of a unit, kids know where they're at. So I love it, personalized learning, it's awesome.
When you see some of this work in action, just the engagement you see from students, and the amount, Emily kind of undersells it, but the amount of pre-work and pre-loading she does with that content is incredible, but it allows her to use her time differently. You hear things like students self-assessing themselves on learning targets, that doesn't happen by accident. That doesn't happen without a lot of pre-thought and a lot of forethought. Next up, we have Holly Barthlow and Nathan Dapper, Twin Oaks English and Social Studies teachers. They will introduce you to some, an example of thematic co-teaching using project-based learning.
Hi, thanks for having us tonight. We are both storytellers by nature, and so we wanted to present this as a story, because we did some research on storytelling, and we know that it's transformative, not for just listeners, but also for the tellers. And that was, that was something new that I learned. So that is what we are doing here. And it's a true story, so there are some bumps in the road, it's not all pretty.
Thanks a lot for having us. So our story started back in 2015, we had our, Jeff sent our welcome letter with all the fun stuff we were going to do at Workshop Week, and there was a Dr. Scott MacLeod on there who was going to be presenting about personalized learning for 21st century learners, and I am sometimes somewhat pessimistic of a person. And so I went in thinking, oh, great, here's something else we're going to have to do. And as the presentation's going on, and he's given us examples of all these great things that schools are doing around and engaging kids, and then many of the same things you've heard here today, I started thinking, what if? What if I was able to bring back a project that I used to do when I taught eighth grade, and that was History Day? So a quick story, History Day, or seventh, or eighth grade used to be American history, state changes standards, I had to move to seventh grade, tried to run History Day with seventh graders rather than eighth graders, and found that I lacked a lot of the skills that I needed to help them be successful.
Ended up with a werewolf on a project.
With a werewolf on a project. And I said, that's it, can't do this anymore, personalized learning, heck with that. And so by the time Scott MacLeod had gotten done talking, I ran over to Holly, we were in the high school auditorium, and I said, let's do this. We were in the high school auditorium and I said, let's do this. We could bring History Day back to Twin Oaks and back to the middle school. So Holly says, okay, because she says yes to every idea that I have. And we quickly went back to our rooms and within the next week, we probably wrote up a brand-new course proposal because if you're going to do something, you might as well just go all in. And so we had this idea of co-teaching. And so we wrote up a course proposal, we submitted it, went through all the chains, and we were denied. And, you know, you told us to do this and we were told no. So that was where our story began.
Yep, that's okay. Luckily, we were kind of bulldogs with ideas. And so we went to Dan and John and we said, okay, what can we do? If we can't make it official the first year, which, whatever, how can we, how can we move this forward? Because we really think this would be good for our kids. We want to do it. We were super excited about the idea. And so in working through the rest of the year a little bit towards registration in February, they both supported us and said, okay, you can pilot. And I said, great, what can I have? And it was more, well, this is what you can't have. I can't promise you can have all the same kids. I can't promise you'll teach at the same time, but we'll do our best to make as many of those like structural things put into place to help support you. And our second year, we had three sections of advanced English and social studies and we had all the same kids. And so we're like, okay, we can really do some interdisciplinary teaching. Not at the same time. We did have one hour that overlapped, but we implemented that year two small PBL units to get us going with that.
And we were able to do with that common hour, we were able to kind of see.
What it would be like.
What it would be like. We were able to do some flexible grouping and a little bit of kind of co-teaching. So year three rolls around and we had a year of piloting. It was great and we wanted to, you know, again, go forward. And, you know, the middle school's kind of a unique gem here in Prior Lake and the two different campuses sometimes make things challenging. And so we had a little bit of a setback. We weren't ready to, to kind of move forward with that. But, but Dan and John, again, were very supportive and they said, how can we help you? We believe in this. We know you guys are passionate about it. And so they were able to, again, kind of finagle some things and we were able, again, to share kids and kind of, most kids, and given permission to kind of keep, keep working at it. Yeah.
Yeah. You're next.
All right. So that brings us to year four. We're starting to see, you know, the trajectory go in the right direction. We were, we brought History Day back, so this is kind of the ultimate goal for us. So last year, we ran our History Day school competition. So for those of you that don't know, History Day is a national competition. The Minnesota Historical Society puts on the Minnesota chapter of that. Kids are given a theme, so they get to pick what they want to research. We don't put any parameters on that, so we have people studying Minnesota things, you know, US things and world things, whatever they're interested in. And then they get a choice on how they present. So are they going to do a traditional kind of exhibit board, documentary? Are they going to do a website, performance? Again.
Research paper.
Research paper, things I don't have the skillset to be able to do by myself. And we had, you know, great success. The kids had a great experience. We had a lot of projects go through and we, again, we shared all those kids. But the thing that was missing was the ability to.
Team teach.
Team teach. Again, we had a common hour where we were able to kind of do some flexible things, but we weren't able to meet the needs of the kids where they're at, at that moment. It was, hey, Mr. Dapper, I have this question about bibliographies. Wow, it's been since I was in my master's program that I had to write one. Oh, easy bib, figure it out. And so that brings us to this year.
No, we can leave it here. So just really quickly, this year, our theme was breaking barriers in history. And in three sections of advanced English and social studies, we had 89 students. We were managing 50 different projects. There were 46 different historical topics this year, so we had a lot less overlap. The five different ways to show their learning. And we are taking 22 students Thursday night to a regional competition. And four research papers are competing for a place at state right now. So I guess my feeling about this year, while I, when I saw my schedule, I immediately called Nathan and I was like, check your schedule. Let's see if this is true, that we have the same schedule. And then I asked John, what did I owe him for that? But.
He set a board meeting.
Yeah. And here we are, making good. We have to get to work at 6:30 to get a parking spot. It's a little past my bedtime. But it's been a ton of work. It's been a lot of hard work and it's been, it's been incredibly fun and we've learned a lot. We have a common prep, so we were finding that almost daily, we were like checking in with our students, doing formative assessments and then planning, like, okay, what are we going to do now, today during our prep before we see our kids coming up, you know, to make sure we're meeting those needs. So while we had our long-term plan in place from last year, it gave us amazing opportunities to do things together as a team, which is something that we have missed at the middle school, not having teams. So it's given us a mini-team. So when we get, you know, a difficult parent email, I can say, okay, I'll write it, you send it.
And one, you know, one thing that this has allowed us to do is, again, kids are passionate about their topic and, and they're picking something that's meaningful. And so last year, we had a girl do a project about the evacuation from Vietnam. And we invite, we need lots of judges for our school competition, so I reached out to the VFW and said, hey, can any of you guys, anyone who wants to come, come help? And, and so got to know John, he's a Vietnam vet and I was, I'm a history teacher, so I'm asking him all kinds of questions and said, so what, you know, what'd you do? I was over in Vietnam twice and I was there for the evacuation. And I said, oh, we, we have a project about that, you know, you want to hear about it? And so it was really very meaningful for both the student whose family had went through this and she had interviewed her grandmother and then for John, who was, was there and he, he kind of saw it come full circle and, and then he came back this year to judge. So it's, it's really kind of been a really unique opportunity where kids would have never gotten that, so.
We have a few student quotes. We are very reflective in our teaching and so we've already surveyed our kids about what we can do better for next year. So you can, you can check those out. So these are things that students learned. And you can see none of it's really about history, which is kind of cool. Because we already knew what they had learned about history. We already saw what they learned as writers and performers. But to see some of those things, we also asked them, why, why on earth would you want to go do more with this, right? Why would you want to take a project that you finished two weeks ago, improve it and go spend your Thursday night at a competition? And in doing so, spend a lunch in my classroom working, because there's really no other time for them to do it.
Hay lunch.
For three, three weeks.
Three weeks of lunches.
Three weeks, okay, yes, three weeks of lunches. You'll see them in our, our video. But there's some of their reasons and I think, you know, I, like the kids who are honest, one girl said, well, I really want to win money. Well, put that down. It's a real thing. We had girls win money last year at state. So we are just going to end our story with our students' voices. Amanda Fay helped us put together a little video for you. And we didn't coach them a lot. Maybe a little. I don't start talking anyway.
I was working together in a group because it was easy to get all the work done and it was very, like, fun.
I think it was like choose your groups too, so I get to know the community better.
Writing the documentary was fun, like finding all the information about our topic and then creating also made something that people enjoy watching.
Telling our project to other people and showing it so they could see like what we did.
Is probably finding out about my topic and finding that information.
Mine was collecting information about our topic.
Mine was choosing our own topic.
Mine was choosing our own.
Lunch times up here where we got to like more time to do our work and where we got to hang out with our friends who also participated and are going to regionals. I think that allowed me to connect with people more.
Again, all those students there could have been down in the lunchroom with.
Well, we're like all like in a theater movie or all in the middle. So it's kind of like obvious that we all.
No, this is why it was different. Did you forget who you asked them?
Yeah. So we were doing something different, not like a cool essay or not saying something, but being a little, I feel like that kind of.
And doing performance really was like, kind of like doing whatever we wanted. We had like a million freedom and we did this project.
It took a lot of time and it slowly burned and at the end it all took together and it was a good job.
Two class periods to work out of it since they're doing teaching.
I was more spread out about giving this up that easier.
I mean, a ton of like different choices about what a project could be about.
I just got a lot of time to do our project, I guess, to work on our pace.
There was a lot more things I had to do. It was less, you know, just do this and do this and, you know, it's fine if your work isn't that great. I had to actually like make sure my work was the best quality.
Thank you. Thank you, Holly and Nate. You see the words of our students saying how they're engaged, saying how they're driven to do more and to do better because of the way our teachers structured their learning. Eric Torgerson is one of our Twin Oaks Guidance Counselors. Personalized learning does not, is not contained in our classrooms. It reaches out all into every aspect of our work. So he's going to tell a little bit about some work he's been doing to personalize social, emotional, learning support for our middle school students.
All right, thank you. I didn't introduce myself earlier when I scurried up you. I'm Eric Torgerson, one of the Guidance Counselors. I work at Twin Oaks Middle School. And when I was thinking about personalized learning, a lot of the work that I do as a Guidance Counselor is very personalized because a lot of the work I do is one-on-one, but that's such a small fraction of students. And really, when we talk about school counseling, it's how do we help all students in all three domains of academic, social, emotional, and college and career readiness, which is hard to then personalize when you have 500-plus students that are on your caseload. But one way that I've had the opportunity of doing that is working with a group that I started four years ago called the Men of Character, which is a group of eighth-grade boys that I work with annually. This year, I have 23 of them and they are awesome. And we work on social, emotional, learning through the framework of leadership development. So talk a little bit about that. So social, emotional, learning, the, the circle there is the five domains, according to Castle, which is kind of the leading experts on social, emotional, learning. And then outside of that is the different themes that I work on with the 23 boys that I'm working with this year. So you can see there's a lot of different things going on there. Really talking about self-awareness, self-reflection, helping them understand themselves as individuals, but also as leaders. And one of the things I tell them right away is that leadership isn't just a title, it's an, an act of service. It's a, it's an action. And so we do a lot more than we talk, including a lot of service learning. So we started with projects that were a little bit more prescriptive, but then they've been able to have their own voice in some of those projects, including, we just proposed at a meeting with Dr. Edwards, a sixth-grade buddies that they're going to start doing during wind time, where they each get paired with a sixth grader and help them, kind of guide them based on the learning that they've done over the last two and a half years at the middle school. From there, so that's the group in general, the way that I've kind of been able to personalize it even more, because even within a group of 23, it's hard to really give them the individualized support that each student deserves. And so over the last three years, I really realized that I could be doing more to individualize and to get to know each student individually, even within that group setting. And so this year, I instituted what I call my Laker Board in my office. So each student has a spot on the board where they get to keep track of their progress towards their goals that they've individually set. So they can get green slips, yellow slips, or red slips on the board. Green slips are positives for anything that they're doing that's positive within our school community. Yellow slips are things that they are working on to improve. Red slips are some negative things that may have happened that they have to do as something restorative to fix. And then each student collects those throughout the quarter and then they're also working towards a team goal. Because it is a group of eighth-grade boys, I kind of lean into their competitive nature and they have a team goal at the end of each quarter to have three times as many greens as they have yellows and reds. So I used to do goal-setting with the students and it was like it would go in one ear and out the other. So I'd have them set a goal at the beginning of the quarter. I'd ask them two weeks later, like, how are you doing on your goal? And they'd say, what goal? Like, what? But so the Laker Board has had a huge impact on that. The visual aspect of the board as well as the tangible papers. I love technology, but it's funny how sometimes old-school works really well. The ability to be able to like have a piece of paper and stick it to the board and then see it on the board gives them a lot of agency and ownership over their own growth. It also allows me to individualize it based on each student's needs. So some students in the group, it's a really diverse group academically, socially, they're not all friends. Some of them are natural leaders. They're already kind of in that role and so they're stepping up and taking on more responsibility. Some of them, they're just dipping their toe in the water of leadership for the first time. So I can kind of tailor each student's goals to where they're at and meet them where they're at. And then I use the board as informal data collection as well to help guide the conversations that we go. If there's a bunch of yellow slips, because they're all getting bad grades, then we can talk about ways to support them more academically in the classroom. Wind time has been huge and it allows me to pull them in flexible groups. So sometimes I pull them all 23 at once, which is kind of crazy, but sometimes I can pull them in small groups based on what we're talking about that day and to provide extra support that way. And always through the lens of like self-reflection and helping them kind of determine where they're going and where they're going as a group. And this is just some quotes I asked them a week ago to give me some feedback, like, how has this impacted you? And this is what some of them have said. So, you know, helping them reflect on their choices, who they are as an individual, as a leader, caring about school, caring about grades. The last quote I liked the best because I told them, I tell them I always have really, really high expectations for them. I say, if you're going to be on my team, then I'm going to hold you to really high standards. And so they know that, but then to also pair that with, it's actually fun. It's kind of cool. It's a good compliment from an eighth grader because there's not a lot of things that they claim is very fun. Nothing's very cool to an eighth grader. But it's been a, a really cool thing and wind time has kind of saved me. I wasn't planning on doing the group again this year just because I was being pulled in so many different directions, but wind time's been a great time when I can meet with the group. When I don't have a lot of other commitments at that time and these students aren't necessarily being pulled to have to do a bunch of academic work because they are students that are leaders and maybe aren't struggling as much in their classes. So it's been a, it's been a really good year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Janine Mesnick, she is a computer science teacher at Prior Lake High School and teaches some math on the side, I think. And Janine is a great example of, our computer science program is really a coalition of the willing. We don't have any licensed computer science teachers in the district, very few districts do. But we have teachers who, because of some background, some experience, some drive to make these opportunities available for kids, we have a flourishing computer science program that's growing in leaps and bounds every year. So Janine is going to talk to you a little bit about proficiency-based progress and deep application in computer science.
Good evening. The Intro to JavaScript class that I get to teach is completely individualized. So students are in grades nine through 12 and they are literally everywhere in that scope from beginning to end of the year-long course. Some of the big things that we do and can do as a whole group, we work on decomposition, so breaking big tasks down into the smaller pieces, which is huge. And then working in pseudocode, so just having our students try to be able to talk to each other, talk to me about what is your code really saying? Our students have to work in pairs twice a week for sure because we really need to build the capacity to talk with each other and be able to articulate, okay, this is what I wanted to have happen and this is not happening, or, or look, I didn't know it would happen, that kind of a idea of a conversation. That by far has been the largest challenge, of course, but it's been good. I mean, it's been great to work with students in that area. Throughout this, I mean, I love to be able to focus on each student and I, I like that it's really teaching them some skills lifelong, just to be able to break down big things into small pieces. But as I've went along with this, I would ask questions of them like, what's working well? What's not working well? What do we need to fix? What do you like? What don't you like? And it wasn't until. What do you like? What don't you like?" And it wasn't until we were doing this presentation that I asked specifically, "Okay, well, how has this impacted you as a learner?" And I don't know if you were able to read through, but there's a few things in there about, it's just less stress when it's individualized. And many of them would frequently tell me, "I kind of like it because it just sort of feels like a little game every day or a little puzzle every day." And I was not ready for that piece and I love it. I mean, I think that's great. I think another part of this is just the ability to, and I can flip to the last one here, the ability to create, right? So every student is creating something different when they're coding, although it's getting to the same end result. And so, some of our final projects so far, because we've had some kids go through all the way through the full year, range from creating a new game to, I had a student who did not like the way Infinite Campus would give him his feedback. I could bother him. So he took some of the code and created his own thing. So now he has this little, for his project, made this program to harvest any piece of data that he wanted and it would print it out in the way he liked, you know, including absences and grades and, you know, what have you, missing assignments. And, so a teacher as a learner, yes. Wow, wow, you know, that's great. But I, I guess I'm really thankful for the opportunity to be teaching computer science because I love it. But, it just gives a different perspective to how students learn. So, and I, yep, I think that was, wow. I'm sure you had a chance to read through these, so, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. Computer science is unique in that we have some students who are completing multiple quarters' worth of learning targets or learning outcomes in one quarter or in two quarters because they're driven, because they're motivated, because they're engaged, and because we let them. We took the ceiling off and we're seeing what they can do. Personalized learning is not limited to students. We are also working to personalize professional learning for our teachers and for our staff, for the adults in our organization. Mark Paulson is a Prairie Lake High School Assistant Principal and he's going to talk to you a little bit about how we're working to personalize professional learning at Prairie Lake High School.
Hi. So as Kevin said, you know, this is going to be about the adult learning that's happening in our district. And so I want to, it's a little bit of a shift, but I also want to make sure there's another pivot here, which is a lot of what you've been hearing is the amazing things that our individual teachers have been doing with the opportunities they've been given in their classroom. I'm here representing the body of work of a very large coalition of our CLR leads, our peer coaches, our built team, Dr. Beazik, the other administrators, Kevin's team. So, I'm here as a representative, you know, sharing the work that we've done. And I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that piece of it. You know, this isn't my work, it's our work. So, as Kevin said, you know, this, I think it was three years ago, maybe four years ago, we started with all of our teachers from pre-K all the way up through high school and said, "What does quality education look like for our students?" And the Laker Learner Plan, the profile, that's the product of that. And we said, "Okay, well, if our teachers want this for our kids, how do we do this for our teachers?" Because the, the way we were doing staff development, while all the things we addressed were important, it wasn't personalized in the way that, you know, students, our teachers are trying to reach out to our kids right now. So, we also then started looking at, okay, but we have five staff development days over the course of a year to do this. And it just fundamentally shifted our way of thinking about what's the best use of that time. And then also just really reinforcing and acknowledging the reality that was kind of already in place, which is, our teachers are learning every day. I mean, the things you're hearing today from all of our staff would not be happening if they were only doing stuff on the five days that we have staff development. And so we needed to acknowledge and support what was already happening and then rethink that five days that we have. So we looked at really two things. One, we looked at, what does research tell us is most effective for staff development? And they had the six things, sustained, intensive, collaborative, job-embedded, data-driven, and classroom-focused. And then we looked at that in terms of the Laker profile, so, or the, the learning framework. How do we make it purposeful, personalized, and empowered? And what we kind of came up with is, we have three main areas of learning that we've been working on for some time. One, CLR, and you've heard about all the amazing things that's happening there. Socially-emotional, you've been hearing about that. And then AGR, which is a lot, maybe on the surface, less intrinsically interesting. It's, some night if you're bored and you can't sleep, call me. And I will get to speak long and lovingly about the thing that I care about and you will have a good night's sleep, I promise. But, assessment and standard, it's, it's a very, very important aspect of what we do. And we have teachers who are digging deep into this work. And it's, it's really quite profound. But, none of, we, we looked at these and said, "Okay, these are the buckets." But the very first step that we have with our teachers is, we ask, and I heard it from one of our presenters, "What do we want people to know?" And that's, so this whole thing started with Kevin's team doing, I think was maybe the first most important step was, we looked at each of these buckets and said, "All right, CLR relates to classroom management, discussion strategies, vocabulary, literacy." And his team came up with a learning continuum that said, "Okay, at basic, this is what we would expect to see in the classroom in this domain." And then, developing, this is what it would look like. Progressing, this is what it would look like. And then at extending, so for each one of these strands, we have a continuum so our teachers can see, "Oh, this is, this is what proficiency looks like." And so, with that piece in mind, we kind of shifted our use of our staff development days to focus exclusively on collaboration. So, what we've done is, we let teachers select which learning group do they want to be in and what strand do they want to work on. So they get to pick what's relevant to them in the moment. And I think you see the product of that. You know, you hear about the different, none, you know, all of these teachers are doing amazing things, but they're digging deep into one thing right now. And then they'll expand and they'll broaden and their peers and their colleagues are digging deep into other things. And when they come back together for their collaboration time, they'll be able to cross-pollinate and share. And so we have people who are passionate about a thing that they're learning, digging deep into it. And all of this is aligned with work that we've identified as a district as being important. And so, let me see. There we go. And then we thought, "Okay, well, let's evaluate this on the basis of, how does this line up with the, what we know as effective PD?" So sustained, every PD day that we have, we reserve time for teachers to collaborate. So the teachers set a goal for themselves and related, related to the strand that they're on. And they set that goal for the next PD day. So by the next PD day, I'm going to accomplish this. And they also are doing this in small groups, so they have some accountability to their peers. But, then the time in between is actually when we acknowledge the fact that that, a lot of learning has already been happening, but let's, let's just acknowledge that. And so the intensive is, every day is a learning PD day. Collaborative, we really try to utilize those PD days to do that one thing that teachers don't oftentimes have the ability to do when they're teaching, which is have time with their colleagues. And then job-embedded, absolutely. Data-driven, we encourage that teachers can tie their goal to their personal learning goal or their learning team goal, so that they're collecting data on the impact of the strategy that they're working on for themselves. So they have some benchmark to look at to say, "How is this impacting my students?" And then classroom-focused, their, their classroom is their lab. That's where they're doing their research, that's where they're doing their experimentation. And again, you know, this is new for us. I, I'm, you know, this is something we're trying this year. But, we, we asked for a mid-year check-in from our staffs and I just, our staff, and I just want to share with you some of the things that we found. So for each learning group, I have these two graphs. So AGR, the one on the upper left, where did you place yourself on the continuum? So, again, from beginning to expand, or extending. Fifty-four percent of our teachers put themselves in developing, 36% put themselves at beginning. I actually find this incredibly positive because, for two, two reasons really. One, you may have not heard of it, it's called the Dunning-Kruger Effect. But basically what they found in research is that the better you are at something, the lower you rate yourself. Because the more you understand what excellence looks like, the further away you realize you are. So, you know, when people say, "I'm really good at this thing," I always get a little nervous because it's like, okay. What do you not understand about this thing that you're telling me you're really good at? But the other reason I think it's really important to highlight that is because it also indicates a sense of vulnerability. Dr. Beazik, the other administrators, our built team, our peer coaches, our CLR, we have worked really hard to create an environment where people can be vulnerable because we know that if people can't be vulnerable, they can't learn, that they can't collaborate. And so the fact that staff are willing to put it out there that, geez, I feel like I'm at beginning on this, tells me that they feel safe in the place that they're doing it. And that's, that's crucial, that's essential. The other piece that's really encouraging though is if you look at the next graph, the one that's kind of popped out a little bit, 72%, almost 73% of our staff, when we asked them, "Do you think you're going to make progress on that learning continuum? Are you going to move towards extending?" Seventy-three percent said yes. And if you think about that in terms of teachers evaluating the effectiveness of the PD that they've attended, this is really encouraging. And the other 27% said, "They're not sure." But part of this whole process is asking them to reflect on their own learning. And say, "Okay, what barriers are getting in the way of you progressing and what can we do to support you?" So it's, it's acknowledging that maybe we're not there yet, but we're going to help you get there. And then if we just move down the different groups, CLR, you're going to see very similar numbers. Again, very, I think, hopeful. And then our socially-emotional, that's our newest initiative that we're really focusing on this year. But again, I think a lot of positive feelings that staff have about the process and an awareness that we have a lot to learn. So, this is our first year with this. We'll be hopefully following this model next year as teachers continue to expand the areas that they're interested in learning about, so.
Thank you, Mark. We have focused this year really on awareness and building capacity and mindset. So, some of the opportunities we've made available for our teachers and our administrators, the Personalized Learning Summit is a partnership between Eastern Carver County Schools, Farmington Schools, even Prairie might be in the mix. But it's a summit offered every August. And we sent 48 teachers and administrators last year just to go see what other teachers are doing. It's very much teacher and administrator-led and it's very much based on, here's something I tried in my classroom, hey, here's what I just, here's what worked. To get them to see that some of these things that other people might be trying are possible. We also sent quite a few teachers and administrators to the Future Ready Learning Environments Conference at Indiana Public Schools. Kind of a similar experience where if, there were different strands based on level, elementary, middle, or high school, and teachers got to experience what personalized learning was like with real students. So they got to see it actually in action with teachers and that brought a lot of our teachers back buzzing about wanting to try some new things in their classroom the next day and really think about how they can do some things differently. So, that's been really positive as well. I hope you've heard some of the common threads: ownership, agency, drive, engagement. Both for our students and our teachers that have, we're starting to see the effects of, from really focusing on making learning personalized, purposeful, and empowered. I am really thankful and proud of the work that our teachers have exhibited here today. It's incredible. And this is again, the tip of the iceberg. So I'm really happy that way I had a chance to share this with you tonight and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
I just want to thank everyone, and I'm going to say this, and I don't think I've said this in 10 years on the board. Those are probably the last two, the best presentations I've seen in, in the board. So I'm really, and a lot of it has to do with, you can see the passion, how, how much people are caring about, you know, our kids and our teaching. And I can't tell you how proud I am of that.
Thank you.
Just a couple things. Wanted to ask on, and I know this is going to sound somewhat probably ignorant. So, when Kristen was talking about the personalized learning days, did you say, how many, like, are you getting that per month or per quarter?
Right now.
Okay.
The kids are working on it all the time.
Okay, so. Dedicated? So, when kids are getting these different learning plans? And you're telling me it's in their School-Age. See, all this stuff is new since I have kids, so I don't, I don't have a lot of visual on it. But, you know, in my day and time, there was, you know, at math, you know, the kids with the green book, the kids with the orange book. You knew the kids and where they were at. So, just with the differentiating, are we, is that still an issue at all? I mean, as far as, or are we able to, you know what I'm saying? Like, is, is, do kids know, "Hey, oh, if I'm in this group, that's a problem." Or if I'm in this group, or, you know what I mean?
Can you come up to the mic because it won't get picked up on the camera? Thank you.
It's not like a bluebirds, breadbirds, blue group, group.
Right, right.
In School-Age, it's completely individualized and you have no idea who has what.
Okay, so everybody's got their own little folder.
You can't see my School-Age page. You don't know who's assigned that folder. The only person that knows is me. And so the kids are just working at their own pace. Some, some kids have the exact same assignments, but don't realize it.
Okay.
And so they're just kind of doing their thing. They're up working on their task cards and then they sit down, they're working on somebody else. Somebody else gets up, works on their task cards. So it's very fluid and nobody really knows who's got what. And I'll just pull different groups and it's, I pull everybody at some point during those days. So they're really not, they don't really see, "Oh, Johnny's been there three times. Hmm, Johnny needs a lot more help." That's not how they feel at all. I mean, because it's everybody. Everybody gets one-on-one time with me at some point.
Okay. So. So yeah, that was, that was my, just my, with the personalized, and even Vicky, what you were saying, I don't know if she's still here or not, but with the math groups, because I've seen that in action at the elementary where, you know, this group will just flow in, we'll have kind of a general lesson sometimes and then it's a quick one and then everybody's kind of working on their own thing. To me, it seems like, I don't, if, if it's a cultural, I mean, like how kids are, when they, when they know it's personalized learning time. Like, I, I talked to one of the teachers at MinCaps and the one thing, the one comment I remember her saying is that she could tell the kids from Farmington compared to the, our kids. Because when it came to free kind of personalized learning time, the Farmington kids, which I think have been doing it a little bit longer than we have, could really dial in a lot quicker than our kids at the high school. And so I'm just wondering, like, from a cultural point of view, like, are we trying to, like, make this as part of our, you know, all the way through? Is it going to be more than three or four days? I mean, is that enough?
Absolutely. I mean, we're, we're working, what you'll see with those, I've talked with Eric about that at MinCaps too. Those kids have kind of built those muscles up. They know what to do. They know, "Okay, I have to get this done. I better not mess around for three days and I better not, maybe I shouldn't work with that guy because I know what's going to happen." Because maybe they've had those opportunities to try out, maybe to, to work with a partner, didn't work so well. The teacher gave them feedback and then they've kind of been able to internalize that as an example. So, we're working to make more of this happen in all of our classrooms all the time, you know.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if the culture gets set in elementary school.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Absolutely.
And we continue it throughout, all the way through, that it doesn't become, you know, "Hey, I got this to do today. I can self, you know, self-motivate." I mean, those are lifelong skills that I wish I had going to college.
Yep, absolutely. And to know, "Okay, here's the outcome. Where am I in terms of that? Oh, I'm over here. That means I really need to put a lot of work in or really engage in learning differently versus if I'm right here." You know, "I might need to do something differently" or "I might need to reach out to other people." But it's about really knowing and having that ability to self-reflect.
Let my other colleagues question.
Any other questions? Mary?
Well, first of all, I think this is great. And, you know, when I went to the curriculum night, I heard a lot of the teachers explaining this to the parents who were just astonished. My kid has to, you know, self-regulate almost, so it was, it was a good feeling from them. And also, the, the whole independence and yes, we can see what they're doing on School-Age. So, when they come to us and say, "No, I didn't know this was going on" or something like that, that, that also helped. You know, the, the self-regulation, as, as Stacy put it, going into college. I had a couple questions though about that. And before I go into that, I also wanted to highly commend the two teachers that talked about the combined English and history. And as you know, I'm very, I've been through the History Day. I've actually been a sponsor, a coach of that and stuff like that. It is a tremendous experience for these kids and I really hope it continues. And I want to thank the people, the teachers in the room who put that together, who are supporting it. That is really cool. And hopefully it continues. One of the questions, though, that I had with the individualized learning. And also the number of kids that were mentioned in some of the classes. And how this works well by doing that is, you know, when you're doing that type of learning, that's fine. But one of the roadblocks that I've heard, and I don't know if it exists or not. Is when they actually have to sit down and write a paper, and that paper needs to be graded. The amount of time it takes per student themselves, their individual styles of writing. And of course, as they go through their educational career, the length and the depth of those papers. So when you're doing short stories, and they're answering questions, and they're going through the rubric and stuff like that, that's fine. But when they actually progress, how is that working? And is that, or is the paper writing and the research paper writing and the different types, is that falling in line? Is that fitting in with this model?
Yes, and. I would say yes, and this is kind of a combination of two areas here. One, in curriculum review with ELA, we've identified writing as an area where we have some work to do. There's kind of a gap. Where our high school teachers are kind of saying, we expect, you know, students to be able to do this, you know. You know, easily write a four or five-page paper, or a research paper, all these things. And our elementary teachers are kind of saying, yeah, our kids with our new writing curriculum that we adopted three years ago. We have second graders, third graders, writing, you know, long and strong for forty-five minutes. It's really impressive. And then we need to keep it up. We need to keep building those, that stamina, that ability to write on demand. And then a really, the ability to use the writing process to iterate, to revise, to make it better. And to write, you know, using all their skills. So we have identified that as a work in our last ELA curriculum review meeting. We aligned a lot of our rubrics, both horizontally and vertically. One of the things that we know is that if we call a thing a thing, we don't need to call it something else when they get to the next level. So a topic sentence, for example. Let's just call it a topic sentence for as long as we can to make it simple for kids to learn that and then take it to the next level. So that's some work we're doing. We know we have some work, especially in secondary, to get a little bit deeper and better with that. But our elementary students are coming up now with that curriculum working its way through with much stronger skills.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just left my comment. Sorry, I know it's late, but seriously. Okay, is that right? I just want to thank you. What amazing examples of truly transforming learner experience. And as importantly, the staff experience. I think that was one of the greatest things for me tonight. Was to feel and hear the joy from all of you. And I know, and we know, how hard your days are every single day. But to work harder than you've maybe ever worked before. But feel more joy and get more rewards. Those comments from students and the engagement from students and the learning from students is unbelievable. So thank you very much. And continue to help your colleagues and make sure that we know how to help you. Thanks.
I just want to make a couple of comments. Having been on the board for a long time, I've had this mantra of what about all the kids? What about the kids that are doing okay? What about the kids that are not doing quite okay, but they kind of get lost in the shuffle? And we started talking about individual learning for a long time. It's been years. And it's been thrown around, this personalized learning, individual learning. What does that really mean? And I appreciated tonight's presentations because you actually made it concrete. Something I can relate to. And I didn't get to say that to the other group. And that's, you know, the cultural part of it is something too. And to me, culture is more than just your background. It also has to do with, you know, how you were brought up, where you're coming from. You know, you might be that white kid that just didn't get some of the advantages the other kids got. That's a cultural thing for me too. So it's looking at all of that. And I kind of think finally, there's hope here. Been listening about this for seventeen years. So this was great tonight. I appreciate it. I really appreciated having the teachers come. I mean, I'm hoping your enthusiasm is being spread throughout all the other teachers in the district. I believe it is. But it was really great to hear from the teachers. No offense to administrators.
I hear you. None taken.
The teachers are the ones that are there. And, you know, they're dealing with culture, they're dealing with individualized learning, they're dealing with a lot of other things with kids and making relationships. So thank you. I appreciate it. It's wonderful to hear, so.
Thank you, and thank you for your time.
No, it took a long time.
Thank you for your time.
Next up, District Budget and Enrollment and Long Range Planning.
Talking about a letdown.
We're going to actually, good evening, board members. And thanks again, everyone. Yes, please feel free to go home. We, we're going to tag-team, Jeff and Julie and I are going to.
We can go to them?
I'm sorry. Jeff and Julie and I are going to tag-team this. We wanted to be sure that board members and our viewing public had a chance to hear again and hear some new things. About where we are with our budget. And really, this presentation is very similar to the presentation that we shared with all the staff. Jeff and Julie and I got a chance to present in every building to every staff. And we also got the opportunity to present to our DSC staff as well. I'm just going to go on as Jeff's pulling this up. The outcomes tonight are very similar to what the outcomes were with our colleagues across the district. We want to be sure, and wanted to be sure, that you, our viewing public and all staff, were aware of why we needed to do a $3 million or a 3% reduction and/or revenue adjustments in our budget to address where our budget is right now. We told staff and are reminding the public that we have just over a hundred million dollar budget. So that 3 million is looking at about a 3% of our budget. We also wanted everyone to be very familiar with our timeline and our budget planning process. And also want you to know how we gathered input at this point from staff and administrators in the process. The next slide, I'll let you visualize, is our strategic plan. And what we talked about with that, and certainly you all know this. Just like we have family budgets, we also have budgets in our school district. And really, budgets are about values. So tonight, you heard a lot about two of our strategic directions. And work under those strategic directions. And I think that as we go through this process, we want to be sure that we're staying as true as we can to our six strategic directions, which ultimately help us achieve that mission for all of our students.
Getting there, keeping this fast.
Oh, you're doing, you're doing great. You're doing great. The other thing that we want to be sure that our public is aware of, that the board members are aware of, and that our staff were aware of. Is that the sky is not falling. You know, I think it was really important for us to be in front of the staff and let them know, here's our current reality, and the sky's not falling, right? Prior Lake Savage area schools is still very well positioned. We have a strong strategic plan. We have continued growth in our community. We have strong fiscal management. We have strong communication processes. Our stakeholder surveys show that we have trust in the community. And you just heard tonight about, from several of our quality staff members. Who ensure that we have a great learner experience for our kids every single day. We have an administrative team that's committed to problem solving and solution seeking. So as we go through this process, we are confident that we'll be able to come to some good answers. Couple of key messages that we want to make sure that everybody understands is that Prior Lake Savage area schools continues to grow in enrollment. What you'll see this evening, as Julie shows a couple data sets, is that we have fewer students who came to the district than we had projected. But we are still a growing district. Another key message is that our state funding has not kept pace with inflation. That's not news to you, board members. But we're going to see again what that looks like for us. We're going to take a look at some of the projected expenditures that were higher than we had originally anticipated. So you're going to see how this kind of becomes this perfect storm. We didn't get as many students as we had anticipated. State funding isn't keeping pace with inflation. And some of our expenditures were higher than anticipated. So while we're making this adjustment at this point, we still want to be sure that folks recognize that we are financially strong and secure as a district.
I'll talk a little bit about the timeline and, you know, where are we at, at this place in time? We started this process a year ago, if you recall. I'm working on the current year budget. And at that time, we were looking at 252 students enrolling for the nineteen-twenty school year, so for the current school year. And the board had approved some revenue assumptions. The 252 students, 2% additional funding. And so we were projecting a little over, about $3.2 million in revenue assumptions. And the board was also looking at some additional expenditures because we were opening some of the new buildings. So we knew we had some expenditures over our revenue budget at that time when the board approved that budget last year in June. And as the summer went on, we weren't, the students weren't enrolling as quickly. And we weren't really sure if that was because of the new online enrollment process. But as we started the year, as you are well aware, that we did not, we had about 125 students instead of the 252 we had expected. As you know, we have had, you know, years where we had 300 or 400 new students, 252. The last couple of years have been in that 250 student range. And so to expect that we weren't going to have another 252 as we looked at all of our data sets. There really wasn't anything to believe that we would have started the current year without those 252 students. And so as we went through October and November, we were coming to the board and we were talking to you about what our budget parameters were and trying to maintain our fund balance policy between eight and 12%. We talked about our class sizes. As you know, we hired our staff. We hire staff for the number of students that we have in our district. We hire custodians for the number of square feet we have in our district. And so as we were going through that, we had hired teaching staff for those 252 students. However, we only had the 125. So really looking at, making sure that we are keeping our class sizes consistent from year to year. And then looking at those open enrollment parameters the board had approved in December. Allowing 100 kindergarten students. In the past, we had limited that to 75. And then the 30 students per grade level from grades one through 12. And in December as well, the board had approved a revised budget for the current year. Which shows an increase of enrollment of only 50 students. And the reason that we have only 50 students is because we lose typically, our historical average is losing about 75 students per year over the course of a year, mainly in our upper levels. But it is across the district, just simply because people are moving, they're choosing other options. And so we lose those 75 students every year. And so, and as we start now, our current year, and working through this budget process again. We're considering, or we're bringing to you a revenue budget assumption based on 125 students for next year. And when we talk about those 125 students, that means that we need to start the year with 200 students. So that we have those 75 students as for our budget process. We know we'll lose those sometime during the school year. So as part of this timeline, we always bring you a board. You know, the board approves our timeline for approving the budget. But this year, we've added these extra, you know, where we, these green and yellow insets. Where we're showing that we're taking the budget. We took, we went on the road basically to all of our schools and we talked about the budget and where we were at to all of our schools and to all of our staff. And we were seeking stakeholder input from them and ways that we can either look at ways for increasing our revenue. If there's something out there that we're not looking at, or ways that they think that we can help us to increase our revenue. Or ways that we can become more efficient in our district. And there's things in their buildings that they see every day that they could maybe give us some input on that as we go through this process. And so we're collecting that information. We're reviewing it. We're trying to put dollars to that information. And we'll be bringing you back some of that information at our next work session. As we go through this, and you have seen this several times, but the basic formula hasn't kept up with inflation. We talk about the basic formula a lot. And the basic formula is the base revenue that we get from the state of Minnesota for, per student for funding. That is about $60 million for our district. Our total overall budget for the general fund is about $100 million. And so it's only about 60% of our revenue that we get 2% on. And I know we've talked about this before. But that 2% is really, in terms of our total overall general fund budget, it's only slightly over 1% new revenue. And so we get about $1.2 million in new revenue on that 2%. And with the $100 million, you can tell it's just slightly over 1%. But that formula, as you can see, hasn't kept up with inflation. What we actually get is in the blue line. What the inflation would be is the red line. So it's about a little over $1,300 per student that we should be getting more in revenue if we would have just received the inflationary factor every year from the state of Minnesota. We're not alone in this. We're part of AMSD Association for Metropolitan School Districts. About two-thirds of the metropolitan school districts are also making budget adjustments this year. And many other growing school districts as well are making budget adjustments. If you look on the list, Wayzata, Shakopee, Eastern Carver County, all growing school districts, Lakeville. Some of these districts have passed referendums. Some have, that aren't on the list, have recently passed a referendum in the last two years. And so that's the reason they may not have to be making budget cuts this year. You have seen this slide several times. And I bring it, I brought it, bringing it back tonight. Just to talk about our enrollment projections over the last several years. And you can see how our enrollment, as we, our school district was, and our elementary schools were filling up with students. The board made a decision in 2017 to limit our open enrollment. And before that time, we actually grew throughout the year. The blue line on the left shows the October 1 numbers. And then the green and the gold color is the numbers at the end of the year. And you can see before that time, we actually grew throughout the year. And after that time, then you can see we started to lose those 75 students after we closed open enrollment, or limited it at every grade level. And so, but however, we were still growing each year. And there wasn't really anything to indicate that we wouldn't continue to grow for the current year. This slide shows a little bit about the district's enrollment history. This is a five-year trend as well. So the blue line, the dark blue line on the left, is our resident students. All resident students, no matter where they attend school. The orange line is those students in the district that are attending Prior Lake Savage schools. The gray bar is those students open enrolling out of our district. And the yellow is those students open enrolling into our district. And then the final light blue line is, bar, is the total student enrollment in the district. And you can see from 2014-15 all the way to 2018-19, our open enrollment into the district increased by 200 students. So that's definitely not the district's story. You know, we grew by a lot more students than 200 over those five years. And so our story is our resident students attending Prior Lake Savage schools, moving into our district. Or deciding to attend our district if they were open enrolling out in the past. As we, as we talk about enrollment, we kind of, this is a new slide. We did not present this one, so it kind of threw me off. We wanted to talk a little bit about our enrollment projections, where we're at today. And so I show the 1920 actual as of the beginning of the month. So you can see we have 8,799 students attending Prior Lake Savage schools right now. What we're budgeting for 2021 is 8,925 students. What we're budgeting for 2021 is 8,925 students. And where are we today in that count is 8,917. So that number looks really good, but remember we need 200 students. And so this is where, this is, we're really close to meeting our budgeted amount. So we're up to 125, but we need that 75 more students in order to actually end up with our budget number of of 8925. That makes sense? Right, any student attending PLCO, those numbers are all included in these total numbers. And this includes students attending the ALC. Any questions on the enrollment?
Just one.
Yes.
Well, so now if, since we have enrollment more open now, do we still anticipate that we're going to lose the 75? I mean, I mean, since that.
That's a great question. I think we have to kind, we have to rely on that trend since that has been our trend over the last several years. However, it will be interesting to see what happens this next year if if we continue to see more students, if there's space available for them to move into or come into the district via open enrollment.
Yeah, I just, since it's correlated before. Jonathan?
This is kind of asking you to pull his historical numbers. So I, along that same line, the years when we did have it open, where we would see a small net increase throughout the course of the year, were we still, I don't know the system. Do we still have the ability to add open? Do we have a sense of the, any of those were opens throughout the year? Does that even happen?
We had a lot of movement during those years and so there was some, it was both.
Okay.
Some people moving into the district and some people open enrolling into the district.
Okay.
As we look at our general fund revenue and expenditures, we did a little look at our, how we compare to our surrounding districts. And so this is looking at Burnsville, Eastern Carver County, Farmington, Lakeville. Prior Lake is the fifth one over Rosemont and Shakopee Schools. And you can see that we are one of the lowest revenue generating districts around us. We're slightly better than Farmington. And the reason for this is because we have one of the lowest operating referendums. We, the district does not have a technology levy. And we also have a low free and reduced student population. And so with with a higher free and reduced student population, there's more compensatory dollars that come with this. And we've talked about this in the past. A district such as Burnsville School District, they have 50% free and reduced lunch. They have about $10 million in compensatory revenue. Our district at 12% free and reduced lunch, student population has about $600,000. So that's why you see the swings in the state aid, which is the orange color. And the blue color is local revenue. So you'll see that we have one of the lowest around as far as state aid. And it is really the lowest one out of this group. But we're also one of the lowest spending districts around. We've had balanced budgets for so, every year. And so you'll see that we have the lowest spending as well. Our district, the two biggest areas that we spend are salaries and benefits. We are an educational organization, so it's people that we hire to teach our students and work in our schools. So the gray and the pink lines are salaries and benefits. The kind of brown color is our purchase services. And that includes things like teachers on call, our substitute teachers. It includes transportation, it may include include our technology. Those types of things are in purchase services. And then we have our supplies and materials is the is the purple color. And then our capital items is the red. And as you reviewed this, the last meeting that you had, we had as a board, the revenue budget assumptions was to, we already know that we'll have a 2% increase in our general education formula. And we anticipate an increase in enrollment of 125 students. We do know that we will see somewhat of an increase in special education revenue. And we're still working on trying to, this is a new base year with some legislation changes. This becomes the new base year. So we're trying to maximize that in any way that we can to increase our revenue for next year. So we're looking at ways of doing that. And then we've levied for additional achievement and integration revenue. So our estimated additional revenue is three point, almost 3.3 million dollars. And then our expenditure assumptions, as you know, we talk about it's a little over $5 million. We take a four year wages and benefits cost average. But this year, the change difference in that is our health insurance costs have increased, are going up about 12%. And so that's a 1.4 million dollar additional expense that was not expected for this year. We know that we would have two additional buses for transportation simply because of increased student enrollment. But we also have boundary changes happening with a new school coming online. So that will have some additional transportation there. This is, we have a new transportation contract that we need to bring online next year. And so as part of that, what they're telling us is there is like we are, we're having difficult time finding substitute teachers. And our custodial staffing, child nutrition staff, they're also having a difficult time finding bus drivers. And so in order for them to pay them more money, we need to help and and look at that transportation contract and find ways that we could help hire, help with the hiring process there as well. We still need to determine what our FTE needs are for our student and staff ratios for both regular general education and special education. And we also know we have some additional staffing needs for custodial staffing. As I told you, we hire custodians based on square footage. We know we have more square footage coming online for next year. And so we'll be hiring some additional custodial staffing for that. We also have some of the increased expenditures for utilities and our other fixed costs, increase in property liability and workers' comp insurance in our custodial budgets.
One of the questions that we've gotten a couple of times, and we wanted to be sure that we added it to the staff presentation was, you know, while you just passed a bond and a referendum and now you've got to look at budget adjustments. So we are really clear to educate or re-educate some of our staff around that bond was for building. And the operating, the additional operating that we asked for at that time was the money that was needed to open those new spaces. So you know, one of the things that we talked about with our staff and Julie alluded to this earlier, those 200 students that we were anticipating that didn't come, that's really a $2 million, you know, difference in our budget. And like we said to the staff, if if those 200 students had come, we most likely would not have done the road show. And you know, we would have figured out some other things and certainly had to make some reductions. But that was really the most significant.
And you've seen this slide before as well. This really shows what happens if we do nothing. We know we'll have another 125 students coming in and it's basing this projection off those 125 students. But if we did did nothing with our expenditure budget, where would we be? And so in five years, it really does show that we would be going into statutory operating debt. You can see in 2018 and 19, we had a high year that year. We ended our year about 14% fund balance. And that was the reason that the board decided to spend some of that money and put some money into classroom and and teaching staff. Unfortunately, the students didn't come this year as well. And so it kind of was a little bit of a double hit as far as we were already spending that money down, knowing that. And then the students did not come as well. But that's why we make these changes. Now we look at ways that we can reduce some of those expenditures so we can make a correction in this line. So it does not continue to go this sharply in this, this sharp of a decline. Our intent is to keep the fund balance between eight and 12%. One of the reasons, you know, we talk about what is eight and 12% fund balance and why is that important for our district? And we have a $100 million budget, 10% is $10 million. It seems like a lot of money, but when we spend every month, just slightly under $9 million on average, just for salaries and wages and expenses, that's just slightly over one month's savings, if you want to look at it like that.
As we've gone through the process of going out and obviously working with you as a board and and bringing you through this process, we've also had our presentations with staff is really talking about what are those principles that are going to guide us through this budget adjustment process? And you see those here. Certainly, you know, just calling out a few here is that transparency in discussions. I know in talking with staff, they've appreciated the presentations, they've appreciated the information. Certainly a balanced budget, maximizing our financial resources, following the the board approved parameters. And again, coming back to that previous slide is we see if we don't do anything, where our finances as a, as a district will go. Our process here is to start making those adjustments now so that that's not our trajectory moving forward. And so we did ask for staff to give input. I think Julie alluded to that. Are there efficiencies, are there things we should be doing? Are there other areas of of revenue that we should be seeking? Are there ideas that we should be considering? And again, I think too, from the staff perspective, there's a lot of information, good questions, I think, from all of the staff groups around this process of of different types of ideas. But again, also helping us to brainstorm and as Julie mentioned, putting a costing to some of the ideas around some of these adjustments that could be made. And so there was a link that we asked staff to to go to and provide their comment and and feedback. So again, we're in the process of going through that feedback. We've got a work session coming up a week from tonight. And so we'll be ready for more, more of a thorough discussion on on some of the feedback that came back and some of the steps that we're looking at moving forward.
And just wanted to end again with those key messages that while we didn't get as many students as we had anticipated this year, we are still a growing district. The state funding is not keeping pace with inflation. We are inviting all of you and we invited all staff to advocate at the Capitol on behalf of students during this legislative session. You also got a chance to review and see some of those expenditures. So we're in the position right now in order to maintain that financial stability. This is the first year, Julie, in 10 years that we've looked at adjustments like this. So our our trends have been incredibly healthy and we just want to make sure that 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 stays that way. And Jeff just alluded to this timeline. We'll look forward to next Monday where we share some more information, some of that input and and where we're at with some of both revenue assumptions at that time and some some discussions around potential reductions and efficiencies. We'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
I've got a couple. First of all, given the importance of these discussions and knowing we're on our standard schedule here going forward with study session, board meeting, study session, board meeting, are we going to add additional study sessions in? Or should we add additional in or think about it to to dive into this a little bit more? I mean, it's it's fairly significant and we do have, obviously like tonight showed, we have very full agendas. Do we have enough time built in to adequately discuss this, I guess is my first question.
I think if we follow the trends of the past or the practice of the past, we do have enough time. They've already, the administrators have already gone to the staff, which is what we, which is what we asked them to do, to get information. My understanding is you're going to put that together in a presentation for us for next Monday. We'll have a chance to talk about it then. And then I think we're going to bring it back at the next board meeting after that. And then another study session and then vote on it in May.
Okay.
So I think we have enough time to do it. If we find out as we go through the process that the board as a whole is not comfortable with voting, we can certainly delay it. I believe.
I just know that we have full agendas and I want to make sure that if we need to discuss this, we have enough time to have a thorough discussion and we're not.
Well, we'll take the time we need. I mean, it's, we've been here now for three hours.
I get it, I get it.
They usually stay.
Uh, you know, we're not going to stop the discussion if there's more that needs to be discussed. But I think they're going to be coming forward with the information that we've asked for.
If I, the only thing I would add tonight is one of the reasons why this meeting was a little, had a little bit more meat to it in the PDSA's are, I think we adjusted and had tonight have an update of, you know, educational equity and personalized learning so that the, as a board, you could have pretty much your full attention on the budget components moving forward at these upcoming meetings. So.
My other question is, obviously, given the economy and a couple of other things, and we've, I think we've always anticipated 2%, although we've hoped for more. And to actually take a look at the demographics, take a look at a couple of scenarios with the, with the economy, et cetera, and not just do a short term plan, actually project it out for at least five years because we don't want to have to go into the same discussion every year. I'd like to see more longer term, so also so it's more consistent for staff and administration. And we're not just reacting to the current situation. I'd like to see that happen if that's possible, just, you know, I know we're looking at 3 million, et cetera, but I'd like to project that out for at least five years.
I don't really feel like we're completely reacting all the time. And we've got three budgets going, the budget year is going at the same time. So it's not, I understand what you're saying about going out five years. Some of that gets to be really gray, I believe, as you get closer to that fourth year. And we do have budgets that are going forward. It's not, it's not like a reaction all the time, like, oh, we're surprised that the state's only given us two. I mean, that's the most that I'm aware of they've ever given us, but, and we know that. But that that is, that's the world that we live in, we need to work with, within that world. I'm not imposed to looking at it farther out, but I think it gets to be pretty gray after you get to about the fourth year.
Most of the demographic reports that we've seen since 2016, we're not, I mean, I'm not surprised by the numbers. But I do think that each year they get a little bit more robust and between that. And I just would like to see us have a, have a couple of scenarios, particularly with the, with the, with the current financial or economic situation of the country, et cetera. Because obviously, we're depending on this 2%. And I think that's a fairly, I'd like to see more, obviously, we're fighting for more. But we also have to think about the fact that some of our revenue comes in off of housing values, real estate and everything like that, because we don't have the business here. That's another reason why I'd like to see us look a little bit more into this to make sure that we are accounting for it. So if we do have something that goes fairly well or not so well, based upon our predictions, that we have a plan to pre-prepare for those scenarios. It just, it's just, you know, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just throwing it out there. And then the other thing that that I just want to jump ahead is, you know, like when you're going into any type of presentation or conversation, one of the things I always talk about first is saying what's out of scope. We know we prioritize educational outcomes. And I don't know if during the discussions with the staff or anything like that, with the variable costs that we are looking at, do we have any lines in the sand to say we're absolutely not going to touch these areas of funding or these programs or anything like that? Has that, has that even, has that foundation been laid yet?
As far as gathering feedback, we left it open ended for the staff to give us feedback on, you know, things that were really important to them around things that we should maintain as well as things that we should look at for more revenue or things that we should look at for more efficiency. So we left it well, pretty well, you know, kind of open so that we could get ideas and could get perspective and feedback from staff.
One of the things that we did talk about is, you know, we, we have questions as well. And we were really forthright with staff about the 200 students this year. Is that just a blip this year? Or as numbers come in, do we need to look at it being more of a new normal or a new trend? So depending on how those numbers come in, as we're all watching them, we've talked about the need possibly to do another demographic study to make sure that we've got fresh data as well. So we can see what that looks like and bring that back to all of you.
We're always open to doing different ideas for revenue projections. If we only want to do 1% or no additional money, we can look at. If we only want to do 1% or no additional money, we can look at all of those scenarios of saying, what if we didn't get any more money? What do we do? Or what if we, no more students? I mean, these school districts go through these all the time. And this is, it's just a little bit different for us because we are a growing district. So districts that aren't growing, they either see that the 2% certainly does not cover your annual expenses. There's just not a way that that can happen. So any new revenue that you get does not cover any new expenses, all your expenses. And so if you're looking at giving any kind of raises or anything like that, it's an automatic. It just does not cover that. And so they look for ways of looking for new revenue. And that's certainly a discussion that we can have. And how can we look for new revenue? Or how do we, what do we look for as far as expenses? And you could certainly look at those options as well.
I would agree. We can run some different scenarios. However, there's a lot of variables that are not in our control. You know, if the cities of Prior Lake and Savage decide not to allow any more building, that means not, there won't be any new, you know, housing going on. So, you know, we had, we had an advantage, I guess, when some of the elderly moved into some of the other places that were built. You know, we can't control that kind of stuff. So to a certain extent, we can run some variable, run some scenarios. But we have a lot of variables that are not in our control.
And I think school districts, people don't realize that. You're approving a budget in June. Your school year doesn't start until September. So you're approving a budget where you really don't know how many students you're going to have. You're, it's all based on estimates and, and projections, the best projections that you have. And so all of those things hinge. And sometimes you're approving a budget without a legislative session being completed. We've done that in the past as well. And so a lot of it hinges on your and the district's best projections as far as all of those assumptions, as we work through those assumptions in our revenue budget. And is this 2%? Is it 125 students or is it 200 students? And what does that affect, does that have on the district's budget? How many teaching staff do we need? How many custodians do we need? What does that all look like as we work through that budget?
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you. And I appreciate your going through it all again in front of the camera, the public. Thank you. Moving on to school board meeting dates for the calendar, for the 2021 calendar, pretty similar to what we did last year. Going with one meeting in July, I guess, joint meeting with study session and regular meeting. The same in December. We've added the school board professional development, June 28th, tentatively. There's really not a whole lot of other changes. Keeping in mind that we've been often enough having to open a meeting during or after a study session. So that is still a possibility in here. And everyone's been pretty flexible about doing that. So appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions about the meeting schedule?
I just appreciate that we didn't have any back-to-back weeks in the fall.
Do I have a motion to approve the school board meeting schedule for 2021?
So may.
By Michael, second by Stacy. Comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Next on our agenda is, is the first reading of policy 208, which is the development and adoption implementation of policies. So it's the policy about writing policies. The one change that we proposed is that we would have them go through a longer process, but then start the second group of policies halfway through. So we did talk about this policy in the work session. And if we're going to adopt this policy, this would be the first regular meeting. And we'll go back to the work session and then come to another meeting for a vote. If everyone understands that. Does anyone have any comments or questions on this? We will not be voting on it tonight. So we'll bring it back to the work session.
I think from a standpoint of those of us looking at it, I think if people have questions or comments, it'd be nice, they would give it to us before. If, if there's question, if they want to have a question during the study session.
Oh, okay.
So we can research.
Okay. Then we'll move on to administrative reports. Dr. Stallow.
Thank you. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. Our collective work is focused on that mission. And tonight I would like to update you on a few things in which we've been engaged. The coronavirus. We continue to participate in weekly calls that have been jointly established by the Minnesota Department of Health and the Minnesota Department of Education, specifically for school districts. As you know, we sent communication to staff and families last Tuesday explaining that Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has a pandemic preparedness plan in place. And under the guidance of the Minnesota Department of Health, we're recommending basic preventive methods such as staying home if you're ill, washing hands, not touching your face, some of those things. We know that developments are always changing and we will be prepared to send additional communication to our school communities as needed. I do want to update board members that will be watching the Spain, the van trip to Spain very closely. I know Spain had some, some major changes today. So we're, we're monitoring that. We'll continue to monitor that and keep you informed. School Cafe, we've had a successful launch of School Cafe for online meal payments. As you know, our current provider FeePay has had ongoing technical issues and announced the product would be discontinued this August. Moving forward, we will conduct an RFP process to identify a vendor to best suit our needs for online payments for student fees. In the meantime, we're pleased that the online meal payment solution seems to be working really well. We've gotten some communication from parents thanking us, which has been great. Just want to touch on graduation rates. I know we sent some information out, but based on the implementation of the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, the Minnesota Department of Education publishes the previous year's graduation rates in the spring so they can account for the summer graduations. The 2019 graduation rates were recently released from MTE. And a couple of our findings were that both our four and seven-year Prior Lake Savage Area School graduation rates continued to exceed statewide rates by a large margin. Our district-wide rates climbed slightly from 2018 to 19. Our rates remain stable. Graduation rate gaps between student groups narrowed in 2019 to overall rates similar to 2017. So we'd had some dips in there. And then all information, all of the information about graduation rates is available on the Minnesota Report Card on the MDE website. And then finally, and we'll continue to monitor leaders, we'll, we'll look at that data as well. And then finally, we celebrated our Teachers of the Year on February 17th. In each of our district's buildings, an exemplary teacher was chosen by staff to represent the quality and contributions of our Prior Lake Savage Area School educators. So we congratulate those teachers and thank them for everything that they've done.
Any other administrator reports? I didn't think so.
I rushed through mine.
Board reports. Mary, do you have anything to report?
No, thank you.
Isabel?
We're just in a transition period. Come on, you've been here all night.
That's perfect. That's perfect. Stacy?
I just have a quick one. Last Friday, Dr. Stallow and I and Michael joined us, went to AMSD, the monthly meeting. And they had the two speakers, I'm going to say his name wrong, Dr. Kishari and Honorable Alan Page, who are doing the amendment, the proposed amendment for education. And so they just basically kind of gave us an overview of what they would like to see amended in the state constitution. It was extremely interesting. Lot of good feedback and questions from the group, you know. You know, they fired at them with all different kinds of questions. And a lot of really good, good feedback. And then they went on and did their spiel at the Capitals, which I'm sure they got grilled a lot more than, from that group. But it was just really, it was, I thought, really enlightening. It was good to hear where their mindset was when this came about. And so it sounds like something that'll be interesting to, to follow in the next coming of months. And then we just had a community engagement meeting right before this meeting, where I think we'll have an update next month, next meeting, just.
The next meeting?
Yeah. So that's it.
Jonathan?
I think you've had enough of me.
Okay.
Michael?
On behalf of Community Ed, the career and job fair is tomorrow, 5:00 to 6:30 p.m., just a reminder. The Early Learning Advisory Committee had just over a week ago, a book fair and a story hour for the kids, which had a great turnout. And I had the opportunity to join some of the staff and parent volunteers to read stories. So that was really nice to be a part of. Got to spend a portion of the day with Sage Academy students with a visiting author and illustrator, Mary Ann Richmond, who talked about bravery and courageous writing, which was lovely. And then several of us will be going to advocate at the Capitol to address some of these budget issues and inflation and champion for all of our students. And I subbed for FLIRP this month. And we had a great update on the progress being made in the schools. And I appreciated the opportunity to hear that.
Thank you. Future events, school board study session right away this coming Monday, March 16th, at 6 o'clock. You mentioned March 17th with AMSD, Day at the Capitol. Early release on March 19th for 9/12 and no school on March 20th for 9/12. And spring break is March 23rd to the 27th. MSBA Day at the Capitol is March 23rd and C Day at the Capitol is May 31st.
It's actually March, I think.
Is that supposed to be March? Okay, March, I wondered that. March 31st. And classes resume after break on the 30th of March. If there's nothing else to come before the board, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So may.
By Mary, second?
Second.
By Michael? I really want second here. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Thank you.